Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Newburgh City Council. It is February the eighteenth. We're here at the Public Safety Building. I call this meeting to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Councillor McBride?
Here.
Councillor Wheatley?
Here.
Councillor Yarnell Holloman will be a few minutes late. Councillor Kilburg?
Here.
Mayor Rosacker?
Here.
Councillor Turgason?
Here.
And Councillor Carmen?
Here.
Thank you.
Would you all rise for the National? Yeah, Pledge of Allegiance, please. It's gonna be sung by Councillor Wheatley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I shall endeavor to persevere. Thank you, Honorable Mayor Rosacker and council. This particular city manager's report is a little different from the many we've seen over the last three years because it contains, it contains more than three years of statistics. And so my intention in this one is not only to show the monthly statistics, but also speak about some of the correlations that I have been able to derive from having three years of statistics. So that's a slightly unusual thing. And we shall press on. And forgive me, I am fighting a clue or something, so I may not have great diction, but we shall see. So first of all, planning combined decisions of all sorts was four. That's very low compared to the last couple of years. And building permits for houses, another month at nil. And that is also not the pattern that we have seen in previous years. So I wanted to stop this slide for a minute just to emphasize a few things. Planning decisions in housing construction have been relatively steady over the period, but with a definite dip in 2024. Planning decisions, on average, have gone from eleven point six in twenty-two to eleven point seven in twenty-three, and dropped in twenty-four to eight point five eight. Running ahead of this trend has been a steady reduction in housing construction from fifteen a month in 2022 to eight in twenty-three. And now for this year, that has statistically finished only six. So that shows the general slowdown in housing construction nationally has also been happening here in our town. This is the essence of a good-bad problem. Bad from the perspective of housing units created, obviously, and housing affordability, but good in the sense that the water consumption pattern has not accelerated in the way that we expected in 2022. Pushing back the deadline for when we must have a water plant, a new water plant, built and functioning. A good-bad problem, and we'll be watching the next few years very closely. Similarly, other types, a little lower. And this is things that are not, may not necessarily be whole homes. They might be decks, they might be a thousand other things. Inspections, always tracking down when there's less construction. Community engagement submissions for, through the website, only fourteen at this time. And that's a little lower than the averages that we have seen. And social media engagement, very strong during the reporting period of December, and higher than the averages. But once again, having three years of statistics in the can, and I think this might be the first time in fifteen years that this city has had three years of statistics available to it that have been collected carefully. We can see some interesting things. And for website interactions, in twenty-two it was twenty-three, in 2023 it was twenty-five, and in 2024 it was twenty-one, on average. So that's nothing remarkable. But social media engagement has gone from eight thousand and twenty-two to seven point five in twenty-three. And then when Emily strongly got involved in doing that, it has exploded to thirteen point six thousand, on average, social media interactions. So clearly, there is yeomanry work going on there. And there are some of the statistics about followers. Nothing remarkable on followers. They tend to just slowly trend upwards as the city continues to grow. Public record requests for the period that closed, there were only three of them. I can now know that PRRs have remained fairly steady at about five per month throughout the entire three-year period. So there have been a fairly steady amount of public information requests. Okay, now on to some bad news. Finance. Despite not adding any extra staff, our payroll expenses have grown considerably over three years. For the period closed, we had one point one three of payroll and two point five million of accounts payable. Now, the accounts payable number is somewhat volatile because it depends if large-ticket items are being paid for at the time. But the payroll has steadily increased over time. To be specific, the average payroll for 2022 was zero point nine three million per month. The average payroll for 2023 averaged out was one point zero one millions for an average month. And for 2024, it was one point one two millions. And that's for the same staffing level, okay? So that is an average of a nine percent payroll cost expense increasing throughout those three years. Driven primarily not by COLA, but driven by PERS increases and driven by the cost of health insurance. That is the driver of our expenses. So that's a tough thing. HR activity. We had three recruitments. We had one hire, zero separations, and five claims of various sorts. And this has been a fairly steady pattern throughout the period. But whereas the finance news was perhaps a little dark, there's some very positive HR news. We have been running, in three years, steadily less and less recruitments every year. Our average recruitments in 2022 was five point six recruitments per month. As people began to know that Newburgh was a great place to work, our retention improved and our recruitments fell for an average for that year of twenty-three to four point one seven. And our recruitment's run in 2024, on average, was three point six seven recruitments per month. We're running less and less recruitments. I don't think every city could say that. Also, separations. One point six people on average left the city every month in 2022. In 2023, one point zero eight people left the city every month, on average. And in 2024, only one person left the city, on average. So that is very positive news. We're retaining our workforce, and one can infer that they like working here, I hope. IT resolved two hundred and fifty-one service tickets for the city. This was a little higher than the averages. The IT workload looks like it rose and then went down slightly, logically because most of our software upgrades, and as those of you at home may not know, we've replaced all of our software since 2022. All systems are new. And so there was a surge of IT activity, mostly at the end of 2022 and the start of 2023, with the pattern then stabilizing. And sorry, I missed one. There were two after-hours events in the month of record. Library activity. The library has grown in efficiency and circulation numbers every year by a huge amount. The circulation of the library, and that's a huge number for this time of year, by the way. Thirty thousand circs in December, that's unheard of, that's historical, actually. Circulation average in 2022 was twenty-three thousand circulations. In 2023, it was twenty-six thousand circulations. And in 2024, it has been thirty-two thousand circulations, on average. We are now doing more circulation events per year than we have residents. And not everybody reads. So that's incredible. Public safety. There was one thousand eight hundred ninety-six calls for service, a little lower than the averages. While calls for service have held fairly steady through this three-year period, the number of citations and warnings has grown somewhat. For nine-one-one calls, which we can presume are the more serious ones, in 2022, there was four twenty-eight, in 2023, there was four thirty-three, and 2024, there was five thirteen. I attribute this statistic to the growing confidence of our public safety team under the great leadership of our chief. Newburgh is clearly safer today than it has been in this period. And officially, based on FBI statistics, is the sixth safest community in the state. And I attribute this to the work of the chief in doing solid, community-based policing. Not too bad for traffic stops in December, I will say. People were behaving themselves. And there's that citations and warnings number for December. And while ten DUIIs is regrettable, it sometimes can be worse for a December. There's the dispatch number, seven seventy-nine, nine-one-one calls, and two-five-two-four non-emergency. And now back to talking about water production. Water production was at fifty-four point three megagallons, and one hundred and seventy point two-two million gallons of effluent were treated. And that's a really big number, by any stretch of the imagination. And even for a December flow, that's a really big number. Despite some housing growth. Now, this, this one took me by surprise, folks. When I analyzed three years of statistics to write this, these comments, this one really surprised me. And I don't have an answer to why, because councillors may want to know why. I'd have to dig into this. Despite some housing growth, to my great surprise, water production has not grown considerably during the period. Partly, I think, this may be the result of hard work fixing leaks, such as the water main break that just happened recently. But we should watch this number closely in 2025 to see if this leveling off continues. If it does, it would further push back the year by which we must have that new water plant. The statistics, in 2022, it was sixty-nine megagallons, on average. In 2023, seventy-three megagallons, on average. And in 2024, seventy-one megagallons, on average. And we had a warm, dry summer. So that went down from, yeah, so I, I, I do not know fully why this is happening. Perhaps it is conservation in effect. Perhaps it is people being thrifty with water use to mitigate their bills. These are possible. Perhaps better leak remediation is part of the picture. But it's a positive trend when we think about the need to build the water plant. Let's see what next year does, and let's look at that number very closely at the end of 2025. Public works, one thousand five hundred and seventy-nine work orders were completed. And that's a really good number of work orders for the period. So that is the summary of all of our statistics, both for December, but also taking away some highlights from three years. It's always interesting to look at our totals. But here would be the ten-thousand-foot takeaway. The city is safer than it has been in years, and its retention rates point to it being a great place to work. This is down to the sterling work of public safety and HR. Water consumption is simply not doing what I assumed it would do in 2021, when I assumed my duties. Construction is sluggish, but we expect it will pick up somewhat in this year. Let's all watch housing starts and water production. Payroll expenses for the same number of staff are greatly outstripping inflation by nine to ten percent growth per year. This is not driven by COLA. This is driven by medical insurance and PERS, not by COLAs, which have been an average of three point five percent per year. And that's not counting 2022, when it was two percent. So it's not COLA that's doing this, it's those benefit costs. Lastly, we have one of the very best libraries in this state, and an ever-more-engaged community. And we haven't even started doing engagement work yet. That's what comes next. Any questions, folks?
Is it true, or did I hear somewhere, that the city receives more revenue from the state depending on our circulation levels? So the higher circulation, the more money we get from the state. Is that true?
So it's actually not from the state, it's from a three-county consortia. But yes, as our circulation goes up, we do receive some extra revenue. And you'll see that in the budget projection.
Thank you, Will. You brought up something that, Colina Crossing. I see that they have been working all winter long up there, or they're continuing to work all winter long. I'm assuming that that means we're gonna look at some new houses up there sooner than later. Do you have any idea? Does Scott maybe have any idea what they're looking at?
I could only speak in generalities, but I'm going to pivot to the CDD director. He will have a lot better idea than I would.
Thank you, Will. Yes, Mayor, we expect the spring, that we'll start to see housing starts in Colina. As you are well aware, they're putting in their public improvements. They have considerable amount of infrastructure. Bless you that they need to put in both Long Mountain View and also up into the development site itself. And it's a four-hundred-lot development. And I think they anticipate somewhere between thirty and seventy housing starts a year, depending on, you know, the market absorption of that. So we're, we're using our time now to do other planning work because we know we're gonna be busy reviewing building permits soon.
All right, we have two people signed up for general public comment. Brandon Slater? Welcome.
Good evening, my name's Brandon Slater. I hope you all enjoyed the snow this last weekend. I was out at Friends Park with my children, building snowmen, and, you know, getting awfully cold. So thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm sure you all know why I'm here, trees. So yesterday morning, an old-growth tree uprooted at Everest and Third Street. You may have heard, it took down a power line cutting electricity for over a thousand PGE customers, my home included. Thankfully, PGE and Tree Maintenance Company responded very swiftly and took care of it. But it does raise an important question. How many other aging trees in our city are at risk? How many trees could be saved or properly maintained before another accident like this does happen? Newburgh is home to such an incredible amount of trees. Douglas firs, white oaks, countless others. And it helps define our city's beauty. Without a structured plan for care and protection, we risk losing some of those. That's why I continue to urge the council to adopt a sensible tree protection ordinance. One that assures proper maintenance, addresses dangerous trees before they fall, ensures new trees are planted to sustain our city's green spaces. I'm sure you've heard the quote, blessed are old people who plant trees knowing they shall never sit in the shade of their foliage. Not that any of us here are old. But I've spoken previously with you all in the past few months about the importance of protecting trees, also planting the right species of trees to prevent buckling sidewalks and the dangers of mismanaged old growth. But tree protection isn't purely about safety. I also believe it's about an opportunity. One avenue we should consider as a city is joining the Arbor Day Foundation's Tree City USA program. Nearly seventy cities in Oregon are already a part of this program, including Tuolatin, Wilsonville, Beaverton, and many, many more. This program provides a framework for urban tree care. And I believe Newburgh is a perfect candidate. They do require a few steps, such as a tree protection ordinance, which we've listened to me battle on about. A tree board or department, a group of people who would, you know, list all of the trees that we have in the town in terms of species and which ones we should maintain, and which ones we should consider removing, et cetera. There is budgetary concerns in terms of investing at least two dollars per capita annually, which you might find already possibly be covered in the existing landscape budget. That's probably a question for those guys over there. And also an Arbor Day observance and proclamation. It could be a community event, yearly event, week-long event, just something to raise awareness and appreciation for our trees and green spaces. It's not just about trees, it's about our city's future. Tree-lined streets, beautiful CPRD parks, well-maintained green spaces. They attract visitors and strengthen our tourism industry. Whether people come for our wineries, our historic charm, our outdoor recreation, our thriving urban forest that we can help cultivate will enhance our experience as we live in this wonderful town and invite more to come check us out. So by joining Tree City USA and passing a tree protection ordinance, I believe we're making an investment, not just in safety, but the long-term health, beauty, and economic success of Newburgh. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Bubba King. Commissioner Bubba King.
Thank you for having me, guys. I am here as actually county commissioner. I was appointed as liaison to the city of Newburgh. Most of you should have gotten an email from me in the last few weeks. Opening the door for any sort of questions you might have, or dialogue back and forth. Some cities will put us on their agenda if there's questions they might have. And I'm happy to do that. You guys should have my number and email, all the ways to get ahold of me. So please feel free to reach out anytime you'd like for any sort of just general, even if you wanna just hang out, I'm down. So, once upon a time, we used to do that. So thank you, guys, for having me tonight, and I won't take any more of your time. This round.
Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. So the next item is continued business. This is our ordinance amending the Newburgh Municipal Code Title fifteen. I'm not sure how much detail you intend to go, go through here.
No detail.
I spent a good deal of time looking over the work that you gave us. And I want to thank you for the staff notes. It very clearly told me what I was looking for in the changes and made it much easier to deal with. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council, Scott Segal, Community Development Director. And as the council will recall, you had a work session on Ordinance twenty-two-five-twenty-nine-thirty-three on February third, where staff presented the code maintenance package, Title fifteen. This is our, our land use code, our development code. The purpose of code maintenance is really just what it, what it says. It's to make sure that our, our procedures, our application requirements, our standards, and our zoning are working correctly. It's not an initiative aimed toward changing the zoning or changing development and design standards. It's really more about clarity in the language, making sure that our systems are operating as they were intended. So it's not a policymaking effort, although there are minor, what we framed as minor policy refinements and improvements, process improvements in this package that we've presented. Between your work session and this evening, the city has received no written comments on the package. The purpose of the meeting tonight is to, for the council to conduct a public hearing, considering any testimony, if anyone signed up to speak.
Scott, I, I need to interrupt you here. I have been remiss here. This is a legislative hearing. I have to open it as a legislative hearing. So we'll do that. This is a legislative hearing. I call this hearing to order. At this point, we're looking for declaration of conflicts of interest or abstention from any of the council. We have none to declare. Thank you. It's time for your staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. And so as, as I was saying, the purpose of this evening is a, is a public hearing. I'm here to answer any questions. I'm not planning on re-presenting or reviewing what was discussed in your prior work session. And as I was saying, we haven't received any written comments or testimony on the package. And I'm not aware of anyone who's signed up to speak this evening, though the city reporter made, and she's indicating no. So I'm happy to answer any questions. The staff recommendation is for approval, move to adopt Ordinance twenty-two-five-dash-twenty-nine-thirty-three. And this council may choose to read that by title only. You may also, at your discretion, waive the second reading if you're so inclined.
Does anybody have questions for, I mean, any development director? All right. So this is the point in the meeting for public testimony. Does anybody in the audience wish to make public testimony on this hearing? Seeing none, public testimony is closed. And we've had our recommendation from the staff. So it's time for council deliberation. Anybody have any questions, comments, or wish to make a motion? Derek, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we waive the second reading, reading of Ordinance twenty-two-five-twenty-nine-thirty-three.
Second that.
It has been moved in second, and we waived the second reading of Ordinance twenty-nine, twenty-two-five-twenty-nine-thirty-three. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Would you like to continue?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. I move that we adopt Ordinance number twenty-two-five-twenty-nine-thirty-three and read by title only.
Second. All right, it has been moved and seconded, and we adopt Ordinance twenty-two-five-dash-twenty-nine-thirty-three and read by, and read by title only. Thank you, James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In front of the council for adoption is Ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-two-nine-three-three, an ordinance amending Newburgh Municipal Code Title fifteen Development Code to clarify regulations, comply with state land use requirements, and improve customer service in the permit process, and amend Title five Business License Regulations with corresponding cross-references.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of passing resident, uh, I'm sorry, roll call vote. Thank you.
Councillor McBride?
Yes.
Councillor Wheatley?
Yes.
Councillor Yarnell Holloman?
Yes.
Councillor Kilburg?
Yes.
Mayor Rosacker?
Yes.
Councillor Turgason?
Yes.
Councillor Carmen?
Yes.
That's seven ayes.
All right, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, Scott. And once again, thank you. Very good job on the information you gave us. And once again, thank you. Very good job on the information you gave us. All right. It is time for new business and we have something special, the Exparte contact training.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Before we get into that, I was wondering if we could add something to the agenda, uh, presentation by the, uh, Shalem Valley Chamber of Commerce.
It's all being taken care of here.
Okay. I just didn't see it on the agenda zero.
No, we haven't. We, we didn't get that, any information to put it on the agenda in a week ago. But we are going to add them into the discussion about today's contract. I'm assuming that's when you want to discuss it.
All right, great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council. James Walker, City Attorney, joined by my colleague, Savani Miller. Appreciate your time today. Appreciate, uh, you making room on the agenda for us just to spend a few minutes with you. We won't take too much time, um, to discuss ex parte contact and ex parte communications. Think the timing's very good to, to have a discussion about ex parte contact and communications for a couple of reasons. Um, we do believe anticipate that there is a quasi judicial hearing. Um, that's going to be coming onto the council's agenda in the, in the not-too-distant future. Uh, and we would expect there to be, uh, a few of them this, this year. Uh, we also have a new counselor, and so it's always good to, to cover this topic and cover this territory as it's a bit unique. Uh, when council is operating or exercising its, its, um, quasi judicial authority. So, um, before I turn it over to Savani, I wanted to set the table a little bit on ex parte contact, um, and how it fits within the context of the, um, the powers that council has and that council consistently exercises. So under section seven of the city's charter, all city powers are vested in the council, uh, with a couple of exceptions. The electorate has power when it comes to the initiative and referendum power, which are primary, primarily on the legislative side. But other powers are vested with the council. And council exercises those powers, uh, in, in three forms, as you already know. A lot of this will be, will be repetitive, but we'll, we'll drill down as we, as we go. Um, so those three different forms of, of exercising council's power are legislative, which we just all saw with the passage of the, uh, ordinance making updates to, to titles fifteen and, and five. Ministerial, which we also refer to as administrative. Um, council may, uh, encounter that later today, should it choose, for example, to, uh, make a decision on the Taste Newburgh contract. That's an example of exercising your administrative authority or administrative or ministerial power. Um, usually those are documented in, in resolutions, although they don't have to be. Your legislative power is documented through ordinances. Um, but what we want to zero in on today is the exercise of your quasi judicial authority. This is where council as a body is essentially operating or functioning as a tribunal that makes a decision, usually documented through an order based on particular facts, um, and existing regulations or laws that are in place. So you're essentially acting, uh, collectively as a judge on a particular matter. Usually this comes in the context of land use matters or land use hearings, as you've seen. They don't necessarily exclusively come in the form of land use hearings, um, but most of them in Newburgh and, and cities across Oregon, they, they, they typically do. Um, so it is within that world of quasi judicial authority that we deal with ex parte contact and ex parte communications, which members of council are prohibited from engaging in such contact or communication. Um, but they do happen from time to time. And so what do you do when those happen? Uh, when those communications happen? Uh, that's what we're here to talk about today. So we'll, we'll talk about kind of identifying wh- what those are. What is ex parte contact? What is ex parte communication? When does it happen? And when it does happen, uh, what do you do? I'll hand it off to Savani to drill down a little bit on our roadmap as far as, uh, identifying and defining ex parte contact in particular. Savani?
Okay. So yes, thank you, James. This is where we're headed. Um, and again, that this roadmap, all of the things we're going to talk about today are primarily to help you identify what is an ex parte contact, how do you avoid it? And then if you can't avoid it, what happens and what needs to happen to make sure that the process is fair? Um, like James said, most of this happens in the land use context. So that's the language that we're going to use for this presentation. And specifically what we'll go over is what is an ex parte contact? There's four elements and we'll walk through each of them individually, including examples. Equally important, what's not considered an ex parte contact? What are the exceptions to that rule? And then I'll turn it back to James and he will go over with you, what do you need to do if an ex parte contact occurs, including when? And I'll just, um, give it away right here at the beginning. You need to disclose it and give all parties interested an opportunity to respond. And James will talk through the specifics of that. We're also going to go over why is it important to disclose it and what can happen on the legal side? Um, if, if it's not disclosed in the proper manner at the proper time. And then also briefly touch on related issues of bias and conflicts of interest, which can come up in the land use, um, arena as well as in other areas, and then walk through some common frequently asked questions. So these are the four elements of an ex parte contact. And again, we're going to go over these one by one. But just so you can see them all together, it's a communication or a site visit that can also come up that's made to a member of a hearings body that occurs outside of the hearings process related to facts or an application that is issue or pending or will be pending before you as the hearings body. Um, and there are many reasons why ex parte contacts are prohibited, but specific to the land use context and, um, one, one of the most important ones is fairness. So when you are sitting as the hearings body, you are trying to make an impartial decision by applying criteria to the facts that are in the record. And so to ensure that you as a hearings body are an impartial decision maker, it's important that what your focus is, is the facts that have been properly set before you in the record and not other outside information that you might get from these ex parte contacts. Communications, the first element, these can take several different forms. So verbal conversations you might have with your neighbors, um, or members of the public who approach you, written communications, including emails, memos, letters, post-it notes. Anything that's in writing can be an ex parte contact if it meets the other criteria as well. This also is going to include newspaper articles and TV programs. So sometimes there will be a decision that was pending before you, as I'm sure you are all aware, that comes up in, in the, in the media, comes up in the news. Um, can also be things that you see on social media. And I saw those statistics. It sounds like there's a lot of engagement in this community on social media, which is great, but it can also be a source of an ex parte contact. If you are absorbing information about a decision that you're going to have to make or about an application that you're going to have to decide on, an issue that's going to be before you from places that are not in the record. Site visits is a kind of a unique one. So this can, this, there are two different types. So an individual site visit, specific to the land use, uh, arena, again, it could be a time where you decide you, um, accidentally go by and a development site and gather information about that. Sometimes it's not accidental, but we're assuming that it's going to be accidental for you because you have all now been through the training. So if, if that happens, the reason that you would want to disclose that as an ex parte contact is because you could have, by viewing the site, started to form an impression about it based on information that is not before you in the record. So it's not technically a communication, but it should still be disclosed. Contrasting that with group site visits, if there's going to be a group site visit, that needs to be part of the actual hearings process. So if the council wants to visit a site where a development is going to happen as a group, that's going to require notice, um, and party and public participation. So that's a different, um, that's a different item. Communication examples here. So can be as simple as you're in the grocery store and a member of the public approaches you to give you their opinion about an application that's pending before you. That's an ex parte contact that's going to need to be disclosed. Can also include that you may be a member of a, of a public Facebook group and someone posts an article and you, and it's from a news source that you trust, so you engage with that article, you read it. And then later you find out, oh, that application is actually going to be pending before us. That's a development that we're going to have to decide on. So that is an example of an ex parte contact. On the site visit example, again, this can be something just as simple as you may drive by a particular development site on your way home. Now that's a closer call. It's not technically an ex parte contact because you're not going there to learn information. But it is best to disclose it in that situation, and there are many decision makers in your seat that do, um, because it's an opportunity for you to gain information about the project. And it's just better to get it out there and allow everyone an opportunity to respond to it. Okay. The second element is that this communication must be made to a member of a hearings body. Like James said, you are going, you are members of a hearings body when you are sitting in your quasi judicial function and there is an application pending before you. Now, this only applies to communications that occur outside of the hearings process. So what occurs inside of the hearings process, that's going to include the hearing itself, including any testimony or evidence or argument that's presented at the hearing. It includes information that is in the record if it has been properly and timely submitted to you for your review. And it also includes, um, conversations with staff. So you still have to be careful about other public meetings requirements, including quorum and serial meetings, um, considerations. But generally you can have conversations with staff about pending applications and that is not considered an ex parte contact. On the timing of this, ex parte contacts can happen even after the record and the hearing are closed. And we'll talk about some examples when we get to the FAQs, but the timing goes from before the application is submitted. So it can include pre-application, if you know that someone is going to be submitting a development application to the city and it goes all the way through until there is a final written decision. And I have had, um, some members of, of city councils even refrain from ex parte contacts after a just final decision has been made by the city. If it is contentious and they are expecting an appeal or additional proceedings before Luba or the Court of Appeals that could come back to the city. The substance of the communication is also important. The communication will be an ex parte contact if it is about a pending application or facts that are relevant to the application or to the issue that is before you. So as, an example here could be you meet someone who's an engineer at a summer picnic and you discuss a hypothetical about a development project. And then later that year, you're sitting in a hearing on a land use permit and someone comes to the podium and you realize it's that engineer. So at that point, you would want to stop the hearing and say, hey, this hypothetical that I heard last summer actually tracks a lot with this application. This is the person that I spoke to. And just get that out there so that other members of the public and parties have an opportunity to respond to it. So that's ex parte contacts. That's what they are. Now switching to what is not considered an ex parte contact. So again, communications with staff and not only your communications, but the applicant or the public's communications with staff are not considered app, are not considered ex parte contacts. So just because members of the public are speaking to staff, that doesn't mean that it creates an obligation for you all to disclose that contact. The exception is that the staff cannot serve as a conduit for ex parte contact. So someone can't go to a staff member and say, I think this, uh, development permit project should really be approved. And then staff takes that communication and those reasons to the hearing body without it being presented publicly. Communications with the public regarding legislative matters or other matters where you're not sitting in your quasi judicial function are not considered ex parte contacts. And then also communications that are a part of the hearings process. So let's say instead that you didn't, you didn't read the news article on your own before you knew this was a pending application, but someone submitted it as part of the record. So it may or may not be relevant to the criteria. It may or may not be important to your decision. But at that point, it would be in the record. So it would be something that you could consider and review without it being an ex parte contact. Okay. And then I will turn it back to James.
Thanks. Thanks, Savani. And I, I do encourage, um, members of council because, uh, the, the joy of technology, technology gives and it, it takes away. It can be kind of flooded with so much information, uh, particularly on the more contentious matters. Um, one of the overarching goals or objectives here is to bring in, um, facts, data, evidence that it may be exposed to into the record or onto the record. So if there is an article, let's say, for example, that you've come across that's touching on a particular application and, you know, is taking a position on it, um, there's nothing prohibiting introducing that into the record. That can operate as a, as a, a bit of a safe haven, if you will, when, when conducting these proceedings. So let's, uh, assume ex parte contact occurs. Um, what do you do then, once, once it occurs? And Savani did not bury the lead like I would have. And, um, and she already said that it's disclosure. It disclosed, disclosed, disclosed. Uh, when making a disclosure, I operate under the rule of thumb that we need to cover the, the who, the when, and the what, um, in each, in each instance. So the who, you know, who was the communication or contact with, um, was with the, the applicant, proponent, opponent? Uh, the, the, the when, it doesn't have to be an exact date and time, but we need to have an idea of when it occurred in relation, in relation to the hearing. Or if it's not a single occurrence, if it's multiple occurrences, identifying, identifying that it's multiple occurrences. Um, and then the what, the content of that, of that communication. Uh, it's important and oftentimes what becomes a big subject in these matters when they become grounds for an appeal is what is, what are the contents that were disclosed? Was there a sufficient summary of the detail of what was disclosed in order for the stakeholders or the participants to have an opportunity to understand what evidence or facts were being used as part of the decision and an opportunity to respond to or rebut, uh, that, that information or that communication that's been shared. So, uh, it doesn't have to be a transcript as far as what's being shared, but a summary of what was discussed, the position that the person take, took. Uh, the, the detail of, um, uh, uh, what they shared is, puts the city in the strongest position and also strengthens the, the, um, ability of, uh, the decision by council or the order to, to withstand, withstand challenge. Another component that I would raise on this slide is in addition to disclosing the who, the when and the what is the timing of the disclosure is, is critical and is important. Uh, the mayor's been diligent with our quasi judicial hearings in the past of calling for extensions and conflicts of interest and ex parte communications at the, early on in the hearing. And that is when we recommend that it be disclosed at the first, you know, at the earliest possible opportunity. Uh, there is case law, um, out there. There's a body of case law that focuses on the timing of the disclosure and analyzes whether a participant in a hearing has had an opportunity to rebut. Um, uh, Newburgh was actually involved in a case in the early nineties about the timing of a disclosure in an ex parte hearing. So it's, it's important to do it at your earliest opportunity, um, during the, during the course of a hearing. So, so a few last points on why it's important to disclose. And I would, I would put these next couple of slides in, in three categories on why it's important to disclose. Uh, number one, it's, it's the law. It's required. Um, in, in terms of not only required, the law doesn't only require disclosure. Um, but there's also, there are also statutory protections, um, that can be a benefit to the city. Uh, when a proper disclosure is made. So the reference that we have on the slide here, ORS two twenty-seven, one eighty-three. Um, that essentially provides a, a bit of a shield for certain, uh, decisions made in the quasi judicial context. Uh, certain decisions are not invalidated or automatically invalidated if, even in the event that there's been ex parte If even in the event that there's been ex parte contact, even in the event that someone has challenged that decision on. On the grounds that ex parte contact occurred, if a proper disclosure. Um occurred during the course of that hearing, RS two twenty seven one eighty three is an example of 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 a. Of a defense or covering or shield that the city uh can have when a disclosure has occurred. You know, another important reason is because the, and this is more practical than legal, although. It's a combination of both. The um when a disclosure occurs, it creates the framework or the ability to um. Allow counsel as the tribunal here to work towards a a stronger ultimate decision or order. The goal of the disclosure is to identify the facts that decisions are being made based upon um to allow for those. Facts or evidence or items that are being presented to be subject to a rebuttal uh till make sure that all sides are being fully considered. These are advantages that that flow from a disclosure, especially in the more contentious hearings. So uh it's another. Uh reason as to why to disclose. You know, the other piece that I would raise with respect to disclosure is. If there's a failure to disclosure, it results in a challenge. It frankly, it does. Draw on the city's resources to defend it uh to defend the the decision to. Uh even if we're not taking a an aggressive approach on the defense, the going through the procedural steps when an appeal goes before Luba or another body. It it takes legal resources, it takes um draws on staff time, it draws on on your time uh and you gotta. You know consistently packed agendas. So uh we really encourage disclosure because it can be a way to avoid. Some of those um resource heavy steps that have to be taken in the event of a challenge or an appeal. Um and also from a ti- from a. Time management standpoint. We like to run the hearings as tight as we can uh so that we limit the exposure to having remand and having to go through the process again. Or reopen the process for other uh other participants after a decision's been made by council. So we've been talking about ex parte contact, but. I raised um the call that the mayor makes during quasi judicial hearings for not only ex parte contact, but also bias and conflicts of interest. These are slightly different concepts, but I think that they're good to to point out and in reference here. Uh because they come into play as well and a lot of issues. Uh particularly in the more contentious hearings tend to, tend to overlap as far as something can be next part to contact, but also. Uncover a conflict of interest or or other items. So I'll turn it back over to Savani for that portion.
Thank you. Yes, and so these could probably both have their own presentation, but we just wanted to talk, touch on them again because of that overlap. So um bias, generally we're talking here about a strong bias, something that's. Deep seated or personal that's going to affect your ability to make an objective decision. Um and that can come through an ex parte contact. But it could also just come from a personal pers- deep seated personally held belief that you have. So for instance. Uh if you have a deep seated personal dislike of shopping centers. And there is a shopping center proposal before you, that might be something where you want to recuse yourself. Other forms of bias that you might develop through an ex parte contact can similarly be cu- cured through disclosure. So an example of that is maybe you went for a walk and you happened to cut through and end a developed property. That uh now has an application related to it. And you have developed an impression that the applicant isn't adequately addressing the slope on that property in their proposal. So that's something that you have information about. You have a a lean on it. You have an opinion on it already, but if you share that opinion and you. Put the information out there, then all of your fellow decision makers also have access to it. And all of the parties have an opportunity to respond to that. And so that lean could be cured through disclosure. Um in terms of a procedural. In terms of what you need to do procedurally to cure it. Conflict of interest is another related topic. An actual conflict of interest is that you or a relative or any associated businesses would financially benefit or be harmed. By a decision that you are making that is in front of you. So. The process there is that you must disclose it and you must also recuse yourself. There's not an option for that actual conflict of interest. A potential conflict of interest is that you or a relative or any associated businesses may financially bis- benefit or be harmed. By a decision that is in front of you. So in that situation, you must disclose, disclose and you may recuse yourself. So a potential or actual example. Or conflict of interest example in the land use context could be that you'd really like to see a particular property developed because you own an adjacent property and it could. Increase your property value. That's probably a potential you could financially benefit from that decision. So you must disclose it. And you may want to recuse yourself. And then our last piece here um is just some questions that come up often in in the ex parte contacts. World and also in the land use context. So the first one is the city council has reached a decision. The hearing is closed, the record is closed. We don't have a final written order yet. Can I talk to the parties now? Can I have ex parte contact now? And the answer is not yet. So there is a case um relating to the city of Medford. In twenty twelve and there the mayor had an ex parte contact after the hearing. Didn't disclose it. And it, the court sent it back to the city for reconsideration because. The other parties didn't have an opportunity to respond it to it at that point, even though the decision was already made, even though the record was already closed. If you are recused from a particular decision, if you've taken yourself out for a bias or a conflict of interest. It's not a good idea to have ex parte contact. So that's a question that can come up is may I do that if I'm not part of this decision making body? It's not a good idea because it could um influence your, it could raise bias issues for your other decision making. The other members of the decision making body. So for instance, if you have an ex parte contact with a party, even though you're not part of the decision, but then they come to the hearing and they disclose that information to your. The other members of council, that could sway them unfairly based on information that is not in the record. And just on their relationship with you. So it's not a good idea. What if you, what if I had contact with the applicant or the opponents before this project was in an application form? So before this issue even hit the city, I had some contact with this applicant and I said, oh, this is something you're going to need a permit for. Why don't you go to? To start that process. That is probably harmless, but it's still a best practice to disclose that interaction. Just so everyone has an opportunity to respond and so it doesn't create the appearance of bias. And to help reduce some of those issues that can come up on appeal that are expensive to defend, even if they don't have um. Even if there's no actual bias. And then finally, what if I had contact with the applicant or the opponents when I was, before I was on the city council? That's another one where bias and ex parte contact can overlap. It's potentially not a technical ex parte contact. You weren't a member of a hearings body. But it is a best practice to disclose it for the overlap between ex parte contact and bias.
And of course, if there are questions, there, there's um. An unlimited number of hypotheticals when it comes to, it comes to ex parte contact and communications, but that's, that's what we're here for. We're here to be a resource. And there are questions that come up along the way and as uh council dives further into these um quasi judicial hearings. Later on this, in the months and years ahead. Any questions? Great, great. Excellent. Well, thank you. Uh I know that the agenda is very busy today, so thank you for the time. And uh we said if there are any other questions or issues, we're, we're here to be a resource. Or in the future, yes. Excellent. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Uh it's seven o'clock, so let's take a quick break, about five minutes and we'll be right back. All right, if everybody would like to take their seats, we'll go ahead and fi- and uh resume the meeting. Didn't I tell you in coffee about it? Oh, I suppose I did. I wanna, I. I've, I've already talked to one more counselor on it than I should have, so I'm being careful not to. Have more discussions about it. But yes, there's a lot of interest. All right, everybody. Next on the agenda is our Newburgh urban design verification study. I'm assuming that's why you're sitting at the desk.
Yes, it is. Um hi folks. Uh my name is Jenna Berman. Um I'm with the Oregon Department of Transportation. And this is my colleague Ryan, who is with a consulting firm that we're working with on this project. Um and so we're gonna tag team this, take turns talking to you. Um it's gonna be hopefully a little less complex than the last one. Um and I just have to say, I do this all the time. We both do. And I've never been to a city council meeting where um there were meat sticks on the table. And I learned so much before I presented. So um so it's already been pretty. I love that. Um anyway, so I'm gonna get us started tonight. Um we're calling this study that we're doing, this is basically transportation planning work. And we call it an urban design verification. It's a little bit of a mouthful. Please excuse that. Basically what we're doing is taking past planning work that's already been done for the city of Newburgh and kind of bringing it forward in today's context. And then we're here tonight um to get your feedback on um some of the work that we've been doing before we kind of finalize our report. So quick, today's agenda, I'm gonna tell you about the study. And we're gonna do that quick overview of the planning work that's been done already, which kind of hopefully helps to explain why the heck we're, we're here today and. Um doing this work in Newburgh right now. Um and then um some of the solutions that we um have. Um we're gonna talk about what we've gotten from the public already in our uh public engagement. And um and then kind of, you know, what comes next. So that's the, the quick overview. Um so I'm gonna start off with um this crazy thing that we're calling a U D V. Um again, I'm, I'm regretting the name uh cause it's not intuitive at all, but um really um. The reason why we picked Newburgh, and I do want to say we picked Newburgh, because we've only done a few of these around the state. For very particular circumstances. Um and the reason why is because there'd been all this really um thorough planning work done already that talked about some really cool things. And then um and then there are some projects coming for the area. And the, one of the funding or one of the challenges with our agency is that we have these planning things like these transportation system plans. Maybe you've heard about that. That was done maybe five or ten years ago in a lot of communities. And it says um a lot, it's a vision document and says sort of what you would like to see moving forward with transportation in your community. But a lot of times the projects in there or the solutions that are in there that were kind of vetted by the community at a point in time. Are um are not super detailed. And so then, we're not really ready. We don't know exactly where the crossing should be, what that crossing should include. That type of thing. And so my strategy um for trying to find efficiencies at a big agency where it can be challenging to find efficiencies. Is to try and get ahead of some projects that we know are coming. And then take those ideas that you already came up with, that were already a priority for the community. And then add a level of detail, like bring them forward, go back out to the community and say, hey, here's what we're thinking about. Here's what you already identified. Now, where do you really want to walk from or bike to or drive to? Or if you're in a wheelchair or a walker, you know, wheel to or roll to, right? And then bring those design concepts a little farther along so they're ready to be leveraged onto another project. So that is why Newburgh was kind of ripe for doing this type of work. There's ADA work coming where the agency is gonna be coming through and fixing all the ADA ramps. And that gave us some opportunities to maybe jump on with additional funding to do additional things. And so that's the gist of what this study is, is all about. So we're really looking for those leverage opportunities. In the near future. And so um I just said some of this, there's a, a, an ADA project coming. And again, we want to take what you've already done, bring it forward. We want to increase safety. Our own guidance has changed a lot at our agency. From when we did some of these planning projects a long time ago, we've learned a lot more. And so we want to kind of get everything um up to current standards. And so um we're looking at doing refinement work, right? So for you all, um we also looked at kind of where there were needs and things like this that we knew about. Where we've heard from people, stuff like that. And so that, the orange, the two orange segments are the, the study area. And um and so we had heard from a lot of folks in particular about Everest and and East First Street. We heard about speeding concerns, for example, on East First, which is two nineteen in our world. Um and um and then there was a lot of opportunity with the couplet uh downtown, what we call a couplet, which is that divided highway, two-way thing. Um and so I'm gonna let Ryan talk a little bit more about the planning work and that kind of probably will say a little bit more of why we honed in on, on these. Two areas.
Great, thanks Jenna. So again, my name is Ryan Farncombe. I'm with a firm called Parametrics. Um just a quick note that my very first job in this line of work fifteen years ago was with the city of Newburgh. It was an internship. Uh so thank you, city of Newburgh. It's fun to be back here fifteen years later. So as Jenna alluded to, one of the um central goals of our urban design verification process is to square. Local objectives for the state highway system with state design standards and objectives and understand how those two get paired up. So briefly, I wanted to cover what um Newburgh has said about um these state highways previously. First, in the Newburgh Transportation System Plan. There is a project in there that looks at removing a travel lane in each direction on Oregon ninety nine, uh essentially through the downtown couplet. Um the Newburgh Downtown Improvement Plan a few years back also looked at um transportation safety and comfort on uh the couplet. And evaluated several different alternatives and included a recommendation that also looked at re- removing a lane on both Hancock and First. To uh improve safety and comfort for all users. More recently, the Newburgh Parking Study has looked at parking in downtown. Um long story short, uh uh. The, the study found that supply is generally sufficient. There were some recommendations as well around um pedestrian crossings that we'll talk about. And then finally, I want to note that um the city council uh previously worked with ODOT to adopt. Um alternate mobility standards, which is another kind of arcane term, I apologize. Um but that essentially is um adopting different uh standards for how much congestion is acceptable. At um intersections on the couplet with Oregon ninety nine. And in general, um those standards are zero point nine nine volume to capacity ratio. So here's a quick image from the uh Newburgh Downtown Improvement Plan. These are um cross, cross sections showing, showing the recommended. Uh lane configuration on ninety nine on both Hancock and First. So you see here that the downtown plan recommended removing that travel lane and essentially repurposing some space for um bicycling and parking. These lane reconfigurations were recommended by these local planning processes. Um because one, they provide proven safety benefits um for all users. Um they, they slow traffic. Um they make, they can help make pedestrians more visible. They provide more space for people walking and rolling. Um and they also support, uh especially with the Newburgh Downtown Improvement Plan, there's a lot of discussion about how this can help support economic development in downtown. So uh Jenna brought us, Jenna and ODOT brought us on board to. Take a fresh look at these ideas that have been espoused in local plans. Look at what uh ODOT's own design standards would say uh for what would be required in terms of improvements to Oregon ninety nine or a project to come along. And for us to examine um several different alternatives to understand uh what's possible, what's, what meets the objectives locally and also at the state level. So again, our goals here were to honor those local plans, meet those ODOT design standards and traffic standards, improve safety and comfort for all users. And ideally identify um low cost, low hanging fruit that could be implemented in the near term, so we don't have to wait forty years for, for money to fall out of the sky. So here's a, a short list of some of the alternatives um we looked at. So we looked at keeping the current lane reconfig- uh can. Excuse me, keeping the current lane configuration but reducing lane widths. Uh and this would potentially uh free up a little bit more space. Uh, and this would potentially, uh, free up a little bit more space to add to the existing bike lane that's out there. Uh, it would likely meet traffic standards cuz we won't be changing anything radically. Um, but it would not improve cycling facilities to ODOT standards and, uh, it wouldn't provide that sort of all-user safety benefit that a, a more full lane reconfiguration would provide. We briefly looked at converting to two-way streets. This was also evaluated in the Newburgh Downtown Plan and, and rejected as part of that, uh, planning process. In short, it's, it's very complex and cost prohibitive and would be a very disruptive project. Uh, it's also unlikely to meet those traffic mobility standards. Um, I'll go back to the third row in a second. We looked at no build, as in what happens if we just do nothing. Um, we felt that that essentially does not address what the community has said, these planning processes, uh, they would like to see on the state highway. It also doesn't address ODOT's own policy and standards for how to accommodate all users on its state highways. So that third row down, uh, reduce travel lanes to two, more or less in each direction through downtown is what we evaluated in earnest, uh, again, coming from those past local plans. It would increase space for people cycling or rolling. Um, it would reduce the number of lanes that people would have to cross on foot. These lane configurations are proven to reduce vehicle speeds. And we also looked at what would happen to traffic if we were to do this as opposed to leaving things as they are today. When we look at traffic, uh, in general, there are relatively minor impacts. Um, the one location where there's an impact is at the College Street intersection, where moving from three to two lanes would potentially increase queuing westbound on Hancock somewhat. We think that's solvable through a couple of different things as we're working to iterate on this project. It's a, as simple as potentially retaining that three-lane section a little bit further west before we neck down to two would help alleviate that, that situation. The other thing we looked at and we know folks are concerned about is, um, diversion, right? If you change the traffic landscape where people all of a sudden, for example, use Second Street, um, to, to bypass the state highway. Our travel model, uh, which is one of our best tools available for this, looking at this, shows that, uh, a few more people would use Second Street on the order of about one car a minute. So about up to 60 cars in an hour during the peak period. So not a huge impact, but, um, some, some diversion would occur. So our consultant team recommendation here, um, is to advance consideration of a lane reconfiguration, as I just described, generally removing one lane in each direction uh, in alignment with that, those, the, the Transportation System Plan, uh, and ODOT's design standards. Uh, I think it's also important to note that the, the Phase One bypass is, is really what's making it impossible perhaps us to have this conversation. That, um, like, I went back and looked at some of the old traffic projections, uh, they did when they were planning for the bypass. And, uh, they're showing if we didn't do the bypass, 55,000 cars a day on 99 in the year 2025. Uh, and we are at about 30,000 cars today. So the, the bypass has had a substantial impact on, uh, through traffic on 99. The other thing, and we'll talk a little bit more about this in a second, is that, uh, a lane reconfiguration can generally there be implemented flexibly. So there are low-cost options for implementing something like this. But there's also a longer-term project, uh, that could more formalize some of these improvements we're talking about. And lastly, I wanna point out that we would not be impacting parking supply with this proposal. Uh, in fact, in the short term, where, uh, our proposal would increase on-street parking on Hancock. So I have a few renderings here just to show you what this alternative looks like. Here's Hancock looking, uh, westbound. So where we essentially would repurpose that, uh, outside travel lane to a, a thoughtful mobility lane and parking. There's a potential in the future, um, depending on how that parking's used and what money comes along to potentially widen the sidewalk, um, on Hancock as well. The other thing, uh, we looked at as part of this was, uh, because of the desire and was also talked about in the parking plan to improve pedestrian crossings, reducing the number of travel lanes helps with that immediately by reducing the, the exposure to traffic. But we also are looking at, um, constructing, um, islands like these, um, to help, um, make pedestrians feel safer when they cross and also improve visibility. And then it's a similar story when we're looking at, um, First Street. So, um, again, repurposing a travel lane, retaining that on-street parking, uh, and adding a, um, essentially a parking-protected bicycle lane. And then a similar story here when we're looking at crossing improvements at several locations, um, adding a, a, ideally a concrete island, um, to help elevate the, the crossing.
So, yeah, so I'm gonna just jump back in quickly because I had the pleasure of coming out and doing some outreach and talking to folks, including, um, Mr. Mayor here, um, at your tree lighting ceremony. So part of what we do is, you know, come up with these ideas. And we did an initial phase of outreach with the community, um, and then kind of heard some things and then sort of refigured some things. And then we came back out and said, are we on the right track? You know, based on kind of what we heard and sort of some of our reworking stuff. Um, and so this was part of that, was going out to an in-person, you know, meeting along with online open houses and, you know, other stuff. And, and as was mentioned earlier by the city manager, you, we were very impressed by the engagement of the community, um, and I see it here tonight as well. Um, so that was actually pretty great, um, because I, I feel like then we get a pretty strong sense of what people think. So this is, um, I just actually loved this, this photo of this super bored-looking baby at your tree lighting ceremony. So I just had to use it. Um, but for, for this second part of our outreach, which was the cup, focused on the couplet more, and I'll talk a little bit more about, um, East First or 219 at the end of our presentation tonight. But we got about, um, 70-plus comments. Um, and, uh, most folks, y- you know, that did comment, it's not a, you know, we don't get everybody, obviously. Um, it felt that we were, the majority of folks felt that we were on the right track with the kind of reconfiguration concept, right? And, and kind of repurposing the space, um, to make room for everybody, basically, and increase safety. Um, lots of concerns for, about speeding, you know, just in traffic. And, you know, we hear that actually everywhere. I mean, I just hear that a lot these days. Um, it really has become an issue sort of actually across the country, but we're definitely seeing it here as well. Um, and then there were definitely questions about, you know, traffic impacts and stuff like that. People were concerned. In fact, I think that pedestrian island idea in part came out of our public outreach because some people realized that if the pedestrians are back of the corner and then you have a bike lane and then you have parking or the other way, parking and then a bike lane, how are those drivers that are getting by gonna see the pedestrians? And so, you know, great, great point. Um, so anyway, so we got some really great feedback and, and, you know, we kind of have all the, the data around that if you ever wanted to see more details on what we heard from the public.
Okay, so last slide, I think, on the reconfiguration here, last couple. So if this were to move forward, um, you know, there's, as I mentioned, there's a couple of di- different iterations. It could be a nearer-term paint and posts kind of project, which this, this photo illustrates, we're talking about there. Um, the advantage of that is that when we're talking about paint and posts, it's something that's relatively inexpensive. Um, and also allows us to understand how it would actually perform in the real world, right? We have our, our, our models and our models are quite good, but, uh, it's also great to get lived experience with these. There's an option in the future, of course, then, to make it more permanent through, um, other physical interventions. Um, but there's not, to channel Jenna, there's not funding identified right now for, uh, permanent improvements. Temporary improvements could be implemented sooner. There are a couple of things we need to work out if we, if we were to move forward with this, with ODOT, uh, in terms of requirements that might need to be met, that might make the price a little bit higher. But nonetheless, um, sooner than, um, uh, the, the permanent concrete intervention. Um, and just final thoughts here. Um, so the, wanted to emphasize, um, that the, our traffic analysis shows that this would function, um, pretty darn well. Uh, again, our traffic analysis is also looking 20 years out and assumes a certain percentage growth each year in traffic. We're very confident were it implemented tomorrow, that there would not be any, uh, substantial impacts to, to congestion. And I wanna emphasize that if it's implemented, there are periodic opportunities to, uh, evaluate how it is performing uh, and change course if need be. I'll leave it there.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, um, take it back and kind of take us home.
Can you go back one?
Yeah.
Slide and I, I didn't understand what the paint, one more.
Oh, yeah. The paint and post, oh, yeah.
What we're looking at there?
Yeah. Um, do you want me to? Yeah. Um, so the paint and post options was a more near-term, lower-cost, try-it-out option. So that's what I, I think we're really looking for tonight from, from you folks is, uh, you know, kind of your level of interest, uh, you know, after asking the community and now coming to you in, uh, you know, um, how you'd like to move forward with this concept. So, you know, one way to do it is to say, you, you know, if you're excited about it, you might say, yeah, absolutely. Like, uh, we'd love ODOT or us, you know, either one of our agencies, like the city or ODOT. You know, it might be an opportunity. There's a lot of grants these days. That's how a lot of our funding is kind of coming down the pipe. And so we could partner on a grant application. One of us could pursue a grant application and say, we wanna do it this way. We wanna do a pilot. We wanna try it out, knowing that we could remove it with a lower cost if needed. Or you say, I'm super gung-ho and let's just find more money and do it in concrete from the get-go.
Just to add, Mr. Mayor, so that, that the paint posted, so the paint would be, uh, restriping lanes or adding, you know, green paint in places like that. And then adding, we had posts like those, those candlesticks shown there. Those could be added selectively where you really wanna delineate space. For example, on First Street, where we wanna make it clear where people are supposed to park relative to, uh, the bike lane. Those posts can help reinforce that.
Good, thanks. Does that make sense? That's just a pedestrian. Yeah, that, that example right there is just, um, that was actually from Mount Angel. And they were, um, creating a safer, shortened pedestrian crossing for kids near a school with paint and posts as a low-cost solution. Um, great, so the, um, we're moving a little east of downtown, right, out on 219. And, um, and these, um, solutions, I feel like, are a little less complicated. So kind of that was the meaty, like the really meaty stuff, that I'd love to hear some feedback from you all. Um, and, um, and this stuff, man, we heard a lot from the community about this. So I feel pretty, pretty confident about, and hopefully you'll tell me if I'm off base, but hopefully we're not, um, about our solutions for this little segment over here. And so we had over 140 comments for just this, like, part of town for our first, uh, open house, which was kind of a record, I think. Um, our communications team was like, no way. They were very impressed. Um, and it was really just focused on this short segment. Um, and the top te- themes were what, what we expected, crossing, safety, Everest Road, Everest, Everest. We heard that a lot. Um, and then, um, there were definitely, a lot of the people that we hear from are people who drive through the area. So that perspective, but a lot of them were also people who walked through the study area. So I thought we had like a really nice balance of, of input. Um, and so, um, long-term, well, let me say this. Everest Road was so much more complicated than we thought it would be. When we started looking at this, we were just like, there's already a flashing pedestrian crossing on the west side, on the kind of grocery store side. And we were like, oh, cool, we, we just might just need to upgrade those flashers to a newer flashing system and make sure the signs are the latest and greatest. And, you know, there's already some enhancements here, right? So we just thought maybe we'll just like, you know, bump them up a notch. And then I took two or three of my engineers out there and we stood there and we watched it. And they were like, whoa. We really need to do more here. And so then we ended up adding, you know, about 20 grand to this study that we were doing to ask the consultants to do what is called an intersection control evaluation, which is what our engineers need if they wanna look at a signal, if they wanna look at a roundabout, if they wanna look at anything like that. And it takes this level of analysis, right? So that was awesome to be able to do. So we did the intersection analysis because we had these consultants already working and we looked at a signal versus a roundabout versus stop signs and you kind of go through the whole thing. And the recommendation that came out of it, um, was, was for a roundabout. Um, and, um, you guys have a whole bunch actually on this end of town. So it seemed also really consistent with a lot of the local, uh, infrastructure that's already in place. Um, and it's just, they just have huge safety benefits. And, um, and the co- the price point and, you know, kind of lines up in all these ways. If you have any technical questions about that, I'll let Ryan address them. But that's the long-term, uh, solution where I am really motivated to find funding, um, for this. And I already have some ideas of how to fund it. The nearer-term opportunity was that ADA project that I mentioned that is happening kind of now. And, um, so I was really hopeful that some of these solutions that we found with a lot of input from the community could be incorporated onto that. And I already have a funding source identified for that. Um, and so, starting on the kind of the east end, so much of what we heard was the speeds and the cars literally turning off of 99 or just, they're coming out, off of 99 like it's a turn lane onto I-5, you know? And, um, so we create those little curb extensions, kind of what that, the paint and post example we were just looking at with the mayor, um, these curb extensions and which really just forces people turning to, to slow down more as they make that turn. Then we would work on, or we would look at adding potentially, um, some enhancements to that first crossing at Church Street that we think will make it, you know, in the marketing world, you might say, make it pop, make it more visible, make it more, you know, so that people crossing there. We heard from a lot of people crossing there. Um, and then moving east from there, um, we felt there was a need for another enhanced crossing, um, near Villa Road. Uh, we really were trying to hope, or hoping to avoid people crossing on the north side of East First along all, around, in front of all those turn lanes, which was just crazy and we saw some people doing it. And then, um, and then, so this is a little bit confusing, so I'm gonna try and say, I'm gonna say it slowly. But near-term, the ADA project has this leverage opportunity, right? So near-term at Everest, we're gonna do those near-term solutions I just mentioned. Make the flashers the new flashers, add new signs, fix those ADA ramps and whatnot because that's what we can do in the next two years. The long-term solution that's several million dollars is a roundabout. And so I would look for funding to do that, you know, maybe in four years. So that's where we came to with sort of what we can do now-ish versus what we could maybe do later. So, I think that's it, yes, um, that is it. And so the next steps are this. Getting some feedback and reactions from you all on what we just showed you. We also need to go to a group called the Mobility Advisory Committee, which is like a freight group. Um, because, um, 99 is a freight route, so we also go to them and say, hey, we did this planning work. We're not building this stuff yet, but this is the direction that we're headed. And we just wanted to let you know early that we might be coming back to you once we have funding. So that's how that works. And then we'll finish incorporating feedback from your two groups into our final plan. Um, and then we start looking for money to implement it. So that is the big, and then I'll be working on the, that, um, East First at 219, that one. Um, getting that work, hopefully those crossing improvements into the ADA project. Cuz I already have funding for that. Yeah, so that was a lot. So, let us know if you have questions or feedback.
Well, we have, uh, we too like public comments and we have two of them, uh, that we're gonna queue up right now. If you wouldn't mind, uh, vacating those seats. The, uh, first one is David Hetty, David Hetty. Hi, David, welcome.
Hello, and, uh, good evening. Thanks for this opportunity. I really just wanted to, uh, introduce myself a little bit and offer some support for this project. So my name's David Hetty. I've lived here in Newburgh for about four years now. I have three kids, um, all in the public school here. And, yeah, I've loved my time here in Newburgh. It's great to be in a, a small town, feel like I'm getting to know people. And I've met many of you, so, um, a testament to our decision as a family to move to a small town. Um, I have been driving since I was 16. I'm 45 now, so, uh, almost 30 years. I've been biking for a little longer than that. I've been commuting by bicycle for about 30 years. And I would say, um, I've put thousands of miles on city streets. So I am, I guess what you could call an expert in the area of bicycle commuting. I felt, when I was younger, very, um, bold and courageous to brave the streets and didn't think too much about infrastructure. But as I got a little older and had children, I began to realize how important it is to, um, feel a sense of protection and safety. Um, and not just feel it, but actually to have it exist in the infrastructure. As we say, um, in the sort of bike commuting world, that if the infrastructure doesn't exist, then people typically don't, don't use it. And so it really is one of those things, as you build it, people, um, begin to use it. it, people begin to use it. And so I fully support what the proposal is. I do have a few thoughts on it, though. So I, I do think that the plan is strong. I don't think it goes quite far enough to really protect cyclists, maybe pedestrians in the short term. I do like that there's sort of a, a test phase where there's a, a paint and post option to see how it's used. But I really think that it can be improved by, on, on the North Hancock, on having more protected bike lane. A cyclist that feels very comfortable using bike infrastructure like that without any vertical protection will be okay riding that. But younger users or older adults would find that quite scary to be riding next to traffic going 25, or if they're speeding, like many do, maybe 30 or, or more in their speed. So by what is being proposed on East First Street with the parking buffered bike lane is something that would be more desirable, in my opinion, because it creates more safety, physical safety for somebody using. I would feel comfortable with my 10-year-old daughter, taking her on that road on First Street. But on Hancock, I think I would feel a little, I would question that. So I think it's a step in the right direction, but I would say we should have a long-term plan that goes a little bit further. And I know that they, they talked some about that. What I'd also just like to say is, looking at this study and seeing the proposal, and I live over by the high school off of Hayworth, that it really is an opportunity to continue building on what seems like a good plan that has been started for cycling infrastructure here. There's great wayfinding signs around town on Villa. I've seen them on, on Hayworth. But you can imagine, I, I live close to Safeway, Spring Brook Plaza. It would be great to be able to use Villa with some, some bike lanes or even protected where possible. To be able to get from Safeway, take Hayworth and hit Villa, go south and go down over Fulton by George Fox and Friends View, and then hit Meridian and, and come into downtown. That would be a very safe and protected way to be able to get my family, not using a vehicle, into downtown to, to use that space. I, I think it goes without saying that we all want a thriving economy here in Newburgh. And I think downtown is really that core and that central place where we can continue to build what a livable, thriving community looks like. We want businesses, good restaurants to stay. And I think as we create more safety, whether that's perceived or physically with barriers, people are going to want to spend more time there. And we'll have that feeling and perception of safety and hopefully be using downtown more. So, yeah, I, I'm a part of Psycho Yamhill County and would love to continue to converse with you all on how we can build a great infrastructure here in town. So thank you very much.
Next, we have Mallory Butler.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Mallory Butler, and I am a resident here in Newburgh. I'm really excited about this proposal. I am a mom of three very young kiddos. My oldest is five, and I have identical twin boys that are three. And once upon a time, I felt relatively safe traversing downtown while they were all in respective strollers. But now that they are mobile and a little more outside of my constant arms reach, I will say, I just, I don't feel as safe. We absolutely adore downtown. And many of their favorite places are downtown, spanning from the library to which I would say a number of the books in circulation currently are probably at our house, all the way across to Critter Cabana are probably with, you know, a stop at Bubble Bear on the way. But consequently, I have been traversing with them and have witnessed a number of really close calls, two of which were while we were preparing to cross, there were two lanes of traffic that were aware of our presence. And just as we're about to cross, the third lane is gravely unaware. And I have not only experienced that myself, but have witnessed close calls with others as they are attempting to cross. And so just hearing about the possibility of the lanes of traffic being brought from three to two would give me greater confidence. And I would imagine other mothers as well. I also just wanted to mention that as people are considering parking and street parking, as we go back and forth getting cupcakes and different things, with having three kiddos in three car seats, it does require getting kids and things out of both sides of the vehicle. And so just knowing that something is going to be done to slow traffic, make traffic more aware, and give just greater confidence with getting in and out of vehicles safely, especially with young kids, is just, yeah, something that I feel would be a great benefit to Newburgh. We have, yes, many of our favorite places. I'm always sad to see places go. Also, because I feel like if we felt more safe, we would be just traversing and spending more time and appreciating and giving money to supporting those respective places as well. So excited for, hopefully, some safer streets in the future. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. You too. Would you like to come on back up so that we can have the discussion? Finish our discussion? We really. Thank you. So you were looking for questions from the council? Go ahead, Elise.
Okay. First, I want to say thank you for your presentation. And it was really thoughtful. And I like both of your energy. And I really appreciate your time coming out today to talk to us about this. This has been a, a lot of conversation for a long time. So, and also thanks for incorporating all of the studies from previous councils and a lot of work that's gone into this. I guess I have a couple of statements of my preferences and then questions as well. So in terms of just, I really want to ensure that our stable table or Taste Newburgh Downtown Coalition and Chamber have adequate time to prepare feedback. And it felt, and this could be me not paying attention, so I'm going to own that, but it felt like this came really fast, this study. And we were all shooting out information as fast as we could, because this has been a conversation that has been going on for over a decade. And it is frustrating when state agencies, and I'm not projecting this on you, but I would love if you could give this feedback to your superiors, when state agencies really act at their speed and interests, really. And this has, it's been very difficult to communicate with ODOT in my time on city council. And not you. I want to be very clear.
Yeah, you're fine.
Okay.
It's a big agency.
I.
It's huge. Yeah.
Maybe part of the problem. But I really would love if we could be more intentional with our business community that will have high impact. And then kind of tagging on to that, conversely, like Mr. Hetty and Ms. Butler, almost have a little bit of conflicting feedback. And I can understand both perspectives of bike safety and also car safety of parking along, in the way that it was configured with the protected bike lane. I would prefer diagonal parking. And I don't know if that's possible. But I would like to be able to articulate that clearly, because that is the feedback I have received from business, uh, community members, is that diagonal parking is much preferred. So I want a real answer, not just an agency scripted answer that feels like a decision that was made for whatever reason, and is now implemented across the state because it was made in one town. And then I guess I would like to know how we can contact and get response from ODOT, and how business partners as well can. I know I've had a number of business owners say that they have tried to provide feedback to ODOT, get communication from ODOT, and that it's very difficult to feel taken seriously. And I do, as you've come out, I think this is actual, an actual safety concern. So, and then my question really is, this is a, I think, going to be a maybe even heated discussion in the community of what this reconfiguration would look like. And near term being two years, I think in most people's mind does not at all feel near term. That feels long term in a lot of people's minds. And so just politically, I'm very curious if any of this funding that you're discussing, I have paid attention to the ODOT budget, and was actually on the floor for some of that conversation. And I'm wondering if this has anything, if this would be part of the governor's transportation package that she's proposing, and what your realistic feelings are about actually getting approved, given some of the concerns that I think are broad amongst the parties around budgeting in ODOT.
Okay. I'm going to try and be quick, because, yeah, because that was really meaty. I'm not surprised about the outreach to ODOT and it being challenging and people feeling like they're not getting answers that they want. It is big. And there's a lot of different people, it's very siloed, right? And so, and so depending on what the answer, the question is about, then we'd send someone to do a lot of different places, right? And so that alone is challenging. And so I just want to acknowledge that. I like to think that, you know, that there's, I mean, we have a lot of great people, but it doesn't mean you get the right person for the right question. And it's just really tricky. So I appreciate that. If there was a theme for the downtown community, or they wanted one contact to go to, we could figure that out, you know, something like that. So let me get back to you on that with who that contact is. And the diagonal parking, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I've heard my traffic engineers say, no, we don't approve that on the state system, especially with volumes of traffic as high as you have, because then people are backing up, right, into oncoming traffic. And so it's a safety concern. And so you've maybe heard it said in different ways, but that's my understanding of it. But I can also get an official, you know, written explanation from a traffic engineer who's more official than I am on that, and get it back to you. I think I lost track of what your other question was.
How recent, how realistic.
Oh, the timeline and the money. Right. Okay, great. No, that's a great question. I can't speak to what's going on right now with the legislature, because it's just above my level of work. I hear murmurs, just like the rest of you, probably. What I can say is in the last legislative session, or at the Oregon Transportation Commission, which is not the legislature, a lot of funding decisions are made there, too. And I have $7.5 million from a funding pot that was called Ped Bike Strategic at a point in time. And I'm using that pot of money to leverage the ADA projects in Newburgh and Cottage Grove. And so that's, that's the part of me that's like, I have some money. And that's where I was really focused in on those crossings on 219 or on East First, on the east end, because those are the types of improvements that I can add on to an ADA project. I can't do sidewalk infill. I can't do a lot of things, because the ADA projects are very focused in their narrow, in their scope. So striping was fair game, signs were fair game. So that was my dream. That is my dream, which I think will come true for that segment. The roadway reconfiguration, that has to happen after the ADA project. And so that's finding another funding pot. There's a program that you might be familiar with called Great Streets, that I hope will continue. We can't predict, well, you know, how, the decisions that are going to be made, of course. But I'm hoping that that program gets bolstered and continues, much like Safe Routes to School, which is one of our most sort of stable funding sources for this type of work. And if that, if we come to a plan, and that the community is looking toward moving forward, I would be interested in applying to Great Streets, which is just for the state system, internal application. It wouldn't be on you guys to fund the reconfiguration if we get to it. Another thing we didn't mention was, you know, there's an opportunity to maybe say, hey, we want to try one side of the couplet first before the other side, you know, that type of thing. So we could look at, at that. I think I'll leave it there. But those were my schemes. And I'm often scheming about money and implementation, because I don't like just planning. I want to actually get stuff done. Yeah. So I'll be back to you with some other things.
So the Everest, 219 and Everest intersection, I don't like the idea of a roundabout. I'd rather see a light. And I just think that the roundabout is going to clog perhaps traffic. Maybe it won't, but it just seems like it, it might. I'm not in your guys' shoes, so I don't have the expertise. But, but it also seems like to me that that would be difficult for fire trucks and, and paramedics and stuff to get out there, because there's a lot, my office is about a half a mile west of that intersection. And there are lots of accidents farther out on 219. And it just seems like to me that it makes it difficult for the trucks, if they've got to go around a roundabout, how do they maneuver that slows down the, the time. The other thing I was thinking about is it was a study years and years and years and years ago, that Newburgh paid for and nothing happened. But I, why not make Hancock an east-west? We need to get the traffic, the trucks off of downtown. It can never really be a gem like, like Third Street is in McMinnville, with all the traffic. And I, I like your idea of the parking much better. But I know that 99 is a freight, oh, well, make Hancock a freight, as long as the trucks can go through, what difference does it make? Except somebody in their ivory tower down in Salem doesn't like that idea. Not you guys, but somebody. So I, I don't know. There was a study that was done, and that, that Newburgh paid for was like $60,000 in the early, late 1990s, early 2000. And that's what was recommended. And then, so if you're coming in from, from Dundee, and you want to go downtown, you go straight ahead. If you're coming from Sherwood, and you want to go downtown, you go straight ahead. If you don't, you go around. And there was also part of that study was coming from Dundee, if your, if your truck or a car, and you don't want to go down through the downtown area, you cut, they were going to cut a road right behind the Dairy Queen and hook it up with Second Street and have a light out here. And that, I mean, that, that could work. And then you cut back in about a block before you get to Herbert Hoover and cut back into, to 99 there. I don't know. I think going from three lanes down through town is a good idea, because I, just like this young lady was saying earlier, I've seen lots of people, I'll stop, and the lane next to me stops, but the, you know, the far lane, it, it doesn't stop, you know? And, and, yeah, that's, that needs to be changed somehow. But, but anyway, so I applaud you for at least looking and trying.
Counselor, could I just offer a couple of quick things about the, the roundabout? So one thing we would plan for, because you're a very good point about trucks and emergency vehicles and things like that, traversing something like this, is the, the center island would be mountable. So a truck or emergency vehicle could drive easily right through the middle of it to make things happen faster.
And farm equipment.
And farm equipment as well. And then the other, the, we did, we did look at a signal, a roundabout always stopped. And the roundabout and the signal both perform okay from a traffic perspective. The reason our team recommended a roundabout is the safety benefits of the roundabout, that a signal would introduce a lot more rear end crashes to this intersection than a roundabout would not. Just wanted to offer both those.
And it didn't meet warrants.
And it, it didn't meet signal warrants, which is another, another issue.
Which means you need to have a certain number of people turning from all the different intersections to actually have the numbers that you need to get to a signal.
The idea at, at Everest intersection there about having The idea at, at Everest intersection there about having some different types of flashing lights, I think that's a good idea, except I can't tell you how many times I've seen young people go up and they don't hit the button to start the flashing lights. They just stand there, they look and they start walking across the traffic. When you've got somebody coming, it's like, wouldn't you wait for that car to go by and make it a little more distance? But maybe the flashing, if that was really big or neon or something, I don't know. Maybe, maybe it would get, you know, the attention, but, or have a bigger sign that says, push the button before you walk across the street and wait for the cars to stop.
Agreed on all that. Can you clarify, I see a couple of different configurations with First Street. It looks like on maybe the 217, the one from 217, the bike lane is on the far inside. Well, no, no, it's on, it's right next to the lane of traffic and then there's the parking. But then I see on this one, it's parking, bike lane. Which one are you guys actually proposing?
Um, so here's First, First Street, East, so we're looking East. Yeah, and for, for First. And then Hancock is slightly, slightly different.
There's two different pictures where the lane, the bike lane, they're on opposite lanes, like this one. No, it shows both, it's the same. So they're both, they both have the bike lane next to the traffic. So that's why I was like, well, which one are you guys doing? I'm not, I'm glad we got public feedback on, from the people with families about biking, because I, I've talked to a few people and we didn't, we didn't really see bicyclists. But I understand from public comment, maybe more people would use it. And he's saying if those were available. I'm, I'm not sure how I feel about parking and then having a bike lane. That to me is kind of a new, a new concept and I'm even thinking children. So you've got people whizzing by you on that side and then you think you're parked, but now you've gotta look for bikes. Or people getting impatient and driving down that lane. I mean, I've seen, people are doing crazy things right now, they really are. My kids are older, but that is, I do like the idea. I was concerned about the congestion. But yeah, safety is a concern, but I'm not, I'm not too sure about the bike lane being there.
But anyway, the parking, just to clarify for me, the parking protected, we call it a parking protected bike lane, this thing where the parking gets shifted away from the curb and the cyclists are in, is that, is this the one you're talking about?
Yeah, that's a concept that I
It is, it is a little bit newer and, and so I'm really appreciate your grappling with it.
I'm not sure if people are gonna think to look, they're used to getting out and there's the curb. I'm not sure if they're gonna be used to looking.
Yeah, yeah. One of the big benefits, you know, we heard a lot from the community, from the business, we, I would like to hear more from the business community, so I really appreciate that comment and we'll do some more outreach there. But one of the things that I heard from the business community, or one of the things that this gets to that I think really supports the business community, even though it's different, a little different. I mean, it's been done, it's not like it's not done, but it hasn't been done here, right? So I get that. Is that then when people are on the sidewalk, there's this huge buffer between the moving cars and the pedestrians. And especially if the business community ever wants to add, like if that sidewalk gets widened at some point and they wanna add like outdoor seating and stuff, and just the sound of that traffic constantly on your left. So shifting, so one, it adds safety for the cyclists, even though I know it's a little different. But actually, it's the pedestrian environment, it makes a huge difference of adding more of a buffer between moving cars and the pedestrian experience that's going in and out of the stores. So that's something that you can't picture when you look at this, but when you're out in a street, just notice when you're walking and being on a street where there's like parking, even just parking between you and the moving vehicles versus the cars are right up against the curb and you'll notice a really big difference on just how comfortable it feels. So that's one reason why we're doing this type of thing. Yeah.
We've had problems in the past with happy fun boy racers speeding across the islands that we, we create, the roundabouts. I know that they, obviously they have to be mountable for a variety of reasons, especially for the TVF and our trucks. But if that does come to pass, I wonder if that can be a somewhat of a conscious lift and somewhat elevated, not completely flat, because it does deter our dragster fans who want to just tear through. And we've had cases in town just last year where kids tried to see how deep a rubber mark they could leave on the middle of, of the island. And I'm not joking, I could show you the pictures. So we actually, we actually added some plastic bumps in the middle of one of ours, still mountable, doesn't defeat the design, but it got rid of that problem with some crazy speeding tactics.
No, I appreciate that. It, it would have some texture to it, but I'll definitely put that in the comments because you can do some other things to like add a different type of surface so that it also makes it feel a little more bumpy. And, but also there's a wiggle to entering the roundabout, so it won't be straight. And that is intended to slow traffic going into it, which is one of the reasons why you see so many safety benefits, like a 96% reduction in fatalities.
I'm glad you brought that up because I'm the one person up here that has experienced driving a semi. And when you pull a 53-foot semi through that, your little squiggles and wiggles, it, it's not necessarily gonna slow the truck down as much as you think. But what it is gonna do is that 50-foot, 53-foot trailer is gonna drag over those curbs that you left. Yes, they have to use that center. Uh, the biggest problem with cars and trucks on roundabouts is cars don't understand just how much room the trucks take. I, I think on that intersection, the other, the, the, if I could be the decider, it would be an intersection with a, with a stoplight, demand lights on Everest and that would be the best solution for that situation. I mean, we take a street that has a 35 mile an hour speed limit and then we complain when people drive 35 miles an hour through the intersection. That doesn't make sense to me, it's a state highway. As its job is to run freight in and out of our town or through our town. The other thing on, I see there, that's, that is First Street heading eastbound. And there's no way you're going to have a left-hand turn lane on College Street on that configuration without getting rid of the parking. That's going to, if you bring it down to two lanes and we don't have left-turn lanes for College, either the other highway, we're definitely going to have congestion at that intersection. So Ken, is there, is there a way we can accommodate that? You mentioned it on Hancock. But the left turn off of College Northbound on, or onto College Northbound is, is in my opinion, a more dangerous intersection. So, the other question I have, we, later on the agenda, we have our Traffic Safety Committee people sitting in the back of the room. Are they, have they been part of this process? Well, good. All right, glad to hear that. That probably should be our point of contact through our staff and, and the Safe Traffic Safety Committee. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming and for sharing all of this. I'm excited for some of the potential safety for downtown. I wanna echo Councilor Holloman with just making sure that our business community is involved in this discussion and has the opportunity to contribute because this clearly will have a significant impact for them. Just one of the questions I had, one of your slides says that maintenance implications need to be worked out and I was curious what that worked out meant. Is there an expectation that the city will help to maintain from a maintenance standpoint? And how does that fit with our budget, city manager, knowing that maintenance of 99 has been something we've gotten some significant feedback on recently, specifically with potholes and maybe the lack of maintenance from ODOT in recent months and years?
Not it. Oh, the joys of working at ODOT. That is such a good question. You know, I, I'm glad you asked it, although I secretly hoped I wouldn't have to talk about it tonight because it's so complex. But you're not gonna be surprised when I say our agency is not keeping up right now, right? So you're dealing with that. We just definitely not. In fact, I had a meeting with them this morning, all my maintenance guys, and they're like, we're doing 15, we're, we're reaching, like for just striping, just the striping, they're getting to about 15% of the system, you know, for like the striping that they wanna keep up with, right? So that gives you a sense of where we're at. Our maintenance budgets have been cut every year for the last like 20 years. So that's why you've maybe heard that the big ask going to the legislature this year is really about maintenance. Right? It's not about new sexy projects, it's about maintenance. And we have a huge backlog. That said, the kind of stuff that we're talking about here is adding stuff onto the system, right? So when we do this type of work, one of the big reasons why we do the public outreach that we do and we come to you and we go to the business community and we go to the freight, you know, communities is we really have to, you know, ensure that, that folks really wanna see this happen, right? Because then we're gonna have to figure out the maintenance plan. And the question mark around that up there and the reason why it is a little bit vague is because we don't know, you know, I'm hoping that when the legislature comes through the package this year, our agency ends up in a better position than we are right now. But I can say that right now, if you guys were really gung ho about us pursuing funding for this and we got the money and we said, hey, we wanna do the paint and post version, we wanna do that kinda near-term trial version, we'd be coming to you and asking how we could split up the maintenance and we'd be asking the city if they could help with some of it because that's just where we're at. Like I said, I hope that that picture changes in the near-ish future, but that's where we're at today. So, great question. Yep.
Do you mean maintenance, you would have the city of Newburgh do some of ODOT's work? Is that what you're?
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, it's our road, but it's traveling through your city. And if, a lot of times for cities, like right now I'm funding some projects, I have some pedestrian and bicycle money, like the one I'm talking about, and a lot of small towns are looking for some enhanced crossings with those flashing pedestrian lights, like Aurora, I'm doing a project there right now where I'm giving them a million dollars to do those. But they've agreed to assume the maintenance responsibility on 99 because they want it. They really want it for their community and we're not in a position to take on more maintenance right now. And I'm not saying that I love this approach, I'm just saying it's the reality of where we're at.
So you're saying ODOT does not have enough money to fix its road, so it's now putting it onto the cities?
Sometimes, yeah.
A state that has a budget surplus can't fix the public road. I mean, that's, it makes me pretty upset.
Yeah, I'm not sure about the budget surplus, but I, I can tell you that that's where our agency's at for the work that I'm doing anyway, which are like multimodal projects, you know, which meeting the needs for all the modes.
Now that we're on the topic of maintenance and potholes, I, so I've always been told that we're, not, I'm, like, I feel like we've always been told, all of us have been told, that we're not allowed to do maintenance on, and I actually would totally support personally with my one vote, to have maintenance on 99 by the city of Newburgh, if that means that we get the potholes taken care of. I understand what you're saying and I would rather be able to respond and say, yeah, that pothole that's had 10 people burst their tire like me. I know it's coming out of our budget, but, well, elect different people. But I mean, I, I mean, it, it, I know, I'm just saying that, you know, I do think though that, is that, how would we even approach that conversation, you know?
So you have to get a permit to work in our right-of-way, but you can work with our district office to get a permit to do work in our right-of-way. It's actually, that's actually one of the processes that's pretty straightforward at our agency.
Because the, the pothole that you're talking about, you and I are saying, we, we agree, we agree. We are saying the same thing. But I do think that it is something that right on Second Street that you're pulling out and there's like three potholes right in a row that are always on Facebook of people popping their tires, that would be amazing.
Not sure that I can, I need more tough money. So the, if this, I don't, I think that if we had more road repair funding, the city would be permitted to take a bigger part in doing these repairs. I can't, I mean, I'm not gonna touch the debate on should the city do that, that's kind of a separate debate, right? But I would say that adding this much linear miles, we can currently do seven-ish sections with our tough budget. We, that would, that tough budget would have to double. So spot pothole repairs, we do go through this process when we've had a bad one and somebody's, you know, ripped a tire or whatever. But it, but I wouldn't say is a particularly onerous process, but there's a process to get that access. And, but just the, the reality of the money is, the 1.1 to 1.2 million dollars a year that Tough does right now could not cover the city of Newburgh doing a grind in Enley along this 19, I mean, it's just, it's just not enough money.
So, is there any action that you want us to take or, or I guess what's next is, is what I, is I am asking?
Well, I think, I think we've heard great feedbacks about making sure that we have fully engaged the downtown community. So I think, you know, we'll, we'll go circle back on, on with this group about how we intend to do that. And we can also circle back with the feedback that we do get. I think in terms of what we're looking for from this body tonight is, is you know, your sense of whether what we presented tonight is how we should continue to proceed. I think we've heard, and we've taken notes about your potential concerns, these are far from the final alternatives. You know, this is very early in the design process, there's plenty of opportunity for us to continue to look at things, like for example, that left turn on the College Street. But I think we're looking for a sort of head nod that we're headed the right direction, is how I would put it. Or not, for that matter.
For, for 219 and Everest, I'd say save your money and put a street light there. You know, save it up and, and, and just put a street light there, traffic light, I mean, not a street light, a traffic light. But I, I don't like that configuration. I don't know, that just, maybe it's just because I've seen downtown so long that that just looks different, too different to me. I don't, I don't like the looks of it. But I, but I do agree, we need to do something. I'm just not sure what.
I heard you earlier say that you supported the two lane, you know, that you like the idea of the two lanes. So to me, that sounds like, and tell me if I'm wrong, you're like, yes to a roadway reconfiguration, but I'm not sure if that's the final con- concept. Okay, that's helpful and I get that.
Why, why do you have it this way for First Street, but the opposite way for Hancock? Like, why are they not the same configuration? Is there a reason for that or?
It's partly to do with, if you're out on First, there are little bulbouts at the intersections that are not present on Hancock in the same way. And so that is why we looked at, we had to look at a slightly different alternative here on, on First Street as opposed to Hancock.
Also for the maintenance conundrum, this is a way of getting the protection that you heard from our community member without adding those candlesticks or something vertical that we then can't sweep behind or stripe next to. And so this is a very low-cost way of having a more protected design for people biking and walking that we can still send a truck through to sweep. So I, I am loo- looking for those, that, that challenge around maintenance. I'm always looking for ways to keep those maintenance responsibilities minimized.
I would like to state for some of the people back here in the back of the room who favor angled parking, you say that we can't do that because you're gonna back out into traffic. Well, that's exactly what happens when you parallel park, you back into the space instead of out of it. So you're really not saving a lot. The parallel parking would be a, a, a better solution in my opinion. Anybody else? So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch. So the next item on our agenda today is our case Newburgh contract. And it had been complicated just a little bit. We want to give the Chamber of Commerce an opportunity to speak. This would be the time for that. This would be the time for that.
Good evening, councilors, my, and mayor. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment tonight. My name is Lindsay Doby and I'm the president of the Shahealan Valley Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. This public comment is on behalf of our chamber board, which includes Scott Parish, Travis Morgan, Mike Joden, John Roberts, Miriam San Gabriel, Keenan O'Hearn, our executive director, Scott Parker, who cannot be here today due to an injury, Bubba King, our past president, and myself.
President.
Past president.
Your president.
I know, I said you were. The chamber plays a crucial role in supporting local businesses and promoting tourism, largely through its operation of the visitor center and chamber office. Under our contract with the city of Newburgh, we subsidize the visitor center as the funding provided does not fully cover staffing costs. The visitor center is not only a physical resource where visitors can access information about local businesses, but our office also fields daily calls regarding places to eat, wineries to visit, and lodging recommendations. The chamber also serves as a vital resource for local businesses, particularly those in the tourism sector. Our office provides a physical space, conference room, and essential business services with access to our building and facility seven days a week, including off hours. Additionally, local Airbnb hosts, hospitality businesses, and tour operators rely on the chamber as a hub for brochures, pamphlets, and guest resources. In the past year alone, twenty-nine businesses and organizations, including the Fairfield Marriott, George Fox University, Porchlight Vacation Rentals, and the Allison Inn and Spa have physically utilized our offices as a meeting space and resource hub. As we enter year five of our ten-year lease, the costs and rent of utilities continue to rise. This year, our rent is increasing by nearly three percent, adding to the financial equation of maintaining this essential business support infrastructure. TLT funding is designated for businesses and organizations that drive tourism-related programming. At the beginning of conversations, the Shahealan Valley Chamber asked for a five percent allocation of total TLT funds, which would equate to eighty-six thousand dollars of projected TLT revenue, allowing us to expand our programming and economic development efforts, benefiting not only the chamber, but also the Newburgh Downtown Coalition and Taste Newburgh. We believe five percent would provide funding incentive based on performance of the organizations with outcome data. These funds could support initiatives such as comprehensive business onboarding and collaborative marketing packages between the Chamber, New, Newburgh Downtown Coalition, and Taste Newburgh for increased visibility and marketing, as well as how to engage with the city of Newburgh initiatives that drive tourism and economic growth. And quarterly roundtables, establishing a platform for hospitality businesses, tourism professionals, city representatives, and stakeholders to identify industry challenges and opportunities, develop unified marketing strategies, address barriers such as workforce shortages and transportation needs. Our bottom line asks, we request a shift in the funding model from a fixed amount to a percentage-based allocation. Currently, the chamber receives a flat rate of eleven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per quarter, or forty-five thousand dollars annually, from the city of Newburgh. We propose moving to a two-point-five percent allocation of total TLT funds. Based on projected revenues, this adjustment would result in approximately forty-three thousand dollars, slightly less than what our current funding, but we believe would be a more sustainable approach, understanding that as the TLT funding increases, so does the allocation to each organization. We strongly believe in supporting and expanding economic development initiatives and recognize the importance of the Newburgh Downtown Coalition. Also receiving TLT funds to revitalize downtown, thus we adjusted our ask to two-point-five percent to support the Newburgh Downtown Coalition's request for TLT funding. This strategic investment in the chamber and NDC would strengthen Newburgh's position as a leader in economic and tourism development. By aligning TLT funds with the needs of local business and the broader community, we can build a sustainable, vibrant, and resilient tourism economy that benefits all stakeholders, including Newburgh residents. Our cohesive goal is not only to encourage tourists to visit Newburgh, but to want to return, which what, which is what happens when a vibrant downtown, a strong DMO, and a thriving business community work together. We urge the council to consider our request to move from a flat rate to a percentage-based funding model, ensuring long-term support that grows alongside our tourism industry. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Britta, Britta Mansfield, representing the Taste Newburgh.
Oh. And Phil.
And.
And Phil. Well, good evening, mayor and city council. I'm Britta Mansfield. I'm the secretary of Taste Newburgh and I'm joined by Phil Amaya, our vice president. Um, we'd like to begin by talking a little bit about the history of the TLT program, both statewide and here in Newburgh. So back in two thousand and three, during the state legislative session, statute ORS three twenty point three hundred was created to, uh, to drive economic development. Travel Oregon is the statewide destination marketing organization and it is funded by a one-point-five percent statewide TLT assessment on all overnight stays in Oregon. This includes hotels, motels, short-term rentals, RV parks, and campgrounds with any stay that is less than thirty days. Currently, uh, the city of Newburgh also has a local TLT that was part of, um, the, the previously mentioned ORS. Uh, it enabled local cities to assess their own fee as well. So Newburgh currently has a nine percent TLT within city limits, of which sixty-four point nine three three percent goes into the city's general fund and thirty-five point zero six seven percent is allocated for tourism promotion, uh, which is very specifically defined. In two thousand and nineteen, the city of Newburgh requested that a group of tourism professionals join forces to create Visit Newburgh, or Doing Businesses Taste Newburgh. We're a five oh one C six nonprofit destination marketing organization and we focus specifically on growing tourism to drive economic growth in Newburgh. Before Taste, uh, the chamber was kind of the city's tourism arm and the city provided a fixed amount of money to kind of help with operations. Um, after Taste was founded, the city continued to give forty-five thousand dollars annually, which you just heard, um, to the chamber just kind of during the transitional period of Taste getting up on its feet. Taste is now fully operational and as such, we are requesting to renew our current contract for an additional six years and receive one hundred percent of the thirty-five point zero six seven percent of TLT funds. Um, we believe that this will provide the highest rate of return on investment for the city and will be more in line with the state's regulations on how this money can be used as Taste Newburgh has the best capacity to promote tourism and increase overnight stays. So just some clarifying points from ORS three twenty point three hundred. Um, tourism promotion means specifically any of the following activities: advertising, publicizing, or distributing information for the purpose of attracting and welcoming tourists, conducting strategic planning and research necessary to stimulate future tourism development, or operating tourism promotional agencies, and marketing special events and festivals designed to attract tourists. And tourist also has a very specific definition. It means a person who for business, pleasure, recreation, or participation in events related to the arts, heritage, or culture travels from the community in which that person is a resident to a different community that is separate, distinct from, and unrelated to the person's community of residence. And that trip requires the person to travel more than fifty miles from the community of residence or includes an overnight stay. Uh, I'm gonna pass it over to Phil and let him talk a little bit about our current work.
Thank you. Uh, because of Taste Newburgh, the city's benefited with an over fifty percent growth in TLT dollars since twenty nineteen, and that money has gone into the general fund, which has spent, been spent on public safety, um, public works, community services, hopefully spilled a few potholes as well. In the last fiscal year alone, the TLT revenue for our area has increased to four percent, which is amazing in the sense that overall tourism in Oregon is down eight percent. So we've been doing a good, good job on that. Taste Newburgh has a proven record where the TLT funds are concerned and we've shown financial accountability, we've shown transparency with yearly financial reviews and by yearly marketing reports. Plus presenting annual marketing plans along with completing a five-year strategic plan, which is required, um, through our contract. Some of our most, um, recent successes have been hosting the annual destination, uh, uh, Oregon Destination Association Conference at the Allison Inn and Spa in which we highlighted our area to over a hundred, um, Oregon tourism professionals. We've received a grant, uh, a marketing grant from Travel Oregon to support wine tourism. We've been selected by Travel Oregon to, um, participate in their Recreation Ready Program to develop experiences on the Willamette River. We're also leaning into accessibility, um, with the Wheel the World Program, which is an international organization that helps people with mobility issues find, um, businesses and services that can help them, um, navigate. Uh, we've also helped restart the Yanhill Tourism Group, which brings tourism entities of Yanhill County together. And currently, we're working on two projects. It's the Yanhill County Outdoor Recreation Map that we're really stoked about and an upcoming tourism education event to support our local hospitality businesses. On the marketing side, we're working on a, a brand new, um, branding update with a updated website as well. We're really excited about this. The website will, um, prove that and show that Newburgh is a worldwide destination. And we want to expand the awareness that Newburgh is at the heart of Oregon wine country, not just the gateway. Over the last six years, we've seen an increase of visitation from not only people outside of our community, but also outside of our state. We've had visitors from Washington, Texas, Illinois, just to name a few. And that just goes to show how much our marketing campaigns have worked. We really want to focus on the shoulders, on the shoulder season when, when visitation is down for our area. People love to come during the spring, summer, and, and autumn times, but we need to get these people coming this time, this time of year when things slow down. So we've been working a lot with the Willamette Valley Visitor, Willamette Valley Visitors Association, uh, and Travel Oregon to make sure that our message becomes part of a larger tourism marketing funnel. We do our best when we focus on our mission, which is to stimulate year-round economy, visitor economy, economy in Newburgh. Our vision is to be widely acknowledged as one of the most extraordinary and distinctive destinations in Oregon and the best-in-class tourism resource in Yanhill County. Therefore, again, we are requesting that we renew our contract for six years and receive a hundred percent of the thirty-five, approximately thirty-five percent TLT funds that are designated for tourism promotion. We believe the city has seen a good return on the investment on the TLT funds and we'd like to continue our relationship with you.
Thanks for hearing us out and we're happy to answer any questions.
I would just like to comment that on the way here today, I heard on the radio that whatever agency rates hotels has designated the one hotel in our state that is on LST Allison, moved up about twenty spots this year to sixty. I think they said sixty-two. I, I couldn't take notes while I was driving, but, um, that's awesome. Congratulations. And, uh, thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you very much. You've contributed a lot of, uh, success to tourism, to your organization. What, what's the data that you have to support that? What's the, like, if you go to your website, you don't look through there. How are you tracking this and how are you tracking people who are coming from out of state?
Do you want to, yeah, that's a great question. Um, thanks. Yeah.
Can I, can I interrupt that question real quick? And I, I apologize, uh, Council Carmen, we have one more public comment today. So, um, Lonnie Parish is here. Let's let her comment. Then we'll have you come back up and we'll deal with this issue.
Great.
And sorry about the confusion. Lonnie Parish, welcome.
Thank you. Been a while since I've been up here.
Too long, I might say.
No, I don't know. I'm, I'm Lonnie, Lonnie Parish. Um, I am, I have many hats here. I am a downtown business owner. Um, I'm half-owner of the Allison Inn Spa, so I can speak directly to that, what Taste was talking about, the growth and honors and stuff. So, thank you. I also was on the very beginning committee of creating the TLT Fund Program. And I was really excited to see that it happened and it's interesting what we had thought and planned it to be is not exactly how it's ended up. There, um, for one thing, there's way more money coming through to it than we dreamt of. The Allison's, you know, ranked really high. We have very high room rents. And, uh, it's well-loved and used and so it's blessed Newburgh greatly. And with that said, um, I guess it went on record that I was for one percent increase and I am not because I feel that, excuse me, it would increase the, the cost to our clients and, um, I think that would hurt business. And I'm not sure we would get that money because I don't think, um, the argument is that it maybe can't go for downtown. And that's truly the hat I want to talk about right now, is our downtown. And it was wonderful to hear the bike people love downtown. You know, I love downtown too. It's one of my favorite things, but we have to be realistic. If we do not have a vibrant, fun, beautiful downtown, we're not gonna have anyone want to stay in Newburgh, no matter what hotel is here or what, um, outdoor activities we have at all. We now have McMinnville right next door, has fantastic hotels now and it's got lots of restaurants. We're losing all of our restaurants. We're losing businesses. Um, traffic is a major concern and I do want diagonal parking. Thank you, Elise, for bringing that up. Um, so I, what I would think is that there's lots of things. Number one, I really want us to all get along and work together like we used to do. Let's have Taste and the Chamber and the NDC and the art, public art community work together and create a vibrant community with, with all the things, business, economic development, um, all the things, tourism and stuff. Um, I appreciate the chamber thinking of us to give, you know, part of their funding to the NDC to help support us, everything we've done, including we had two years of volunteer executive director because we had no money. That was really hard. And now we struggle to keep an executive director in. So we have to do all this fundraising and then all of the downtown cleanup we do by volunteerism, all the barrels of volunteerism. The public art is totally volunteerism and I don't know if you realize, but the city, when we purchase a sculpture every year, the city gets that. So we're giving you economic benefit by our volunteer work. Um, we spend too much money and time and resources running things like the, um, Wednesday Market, the Christmas Tree, the Halloween, all the activities you see downtown are because of the NDC. They're the ones that work with other people, like the Kiwanis and stuff. So I'm here to talk about funding the NDC in a sustainable way. If we could have funding for three years in a row, that we don't have to go out and scramble and search and look for an executive director, we could prove to the community the value of the downtown association. I think it's critical. And what I would truly like is to share some of that money, to be honest, because there's a lot. I know where the majority comes from. And I just, I feel like we still support all those things anyway, right? So, if that doesn't work, and I don't want to throw this out because I really want us to work and share those, the NDCs, but if the city would be willing to put up a specific amount of money, and I would say nothing less than thirty thousand dollars to forty a year for three years, then I think we could go out and partner and match and scramble. But we could get the matching funds to run both the art, the Newburgh Public Art Council and the NDC, which those combined budgets are a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which is peanuts compared to the kind of money you're talking about going to these entities. Um, I think we could do that, but I would prefer to share the bounty of the resources of our visitors. And I think that way, what we could do is show you, show the community, show everybody what could really happen and the value of having a vibrant downtown. That's how MAC works. They all work together, you know, to do things. Um, instead of silo and fight and argue over their money. Then I think the next time the TLTs come around, it would be an easy, yes, we need to support the chamber and the NDC and Taste Newburgh. So, that's all. I just, I just think it's just really important. I, I really want us to, to join forces, be part of that stable table like Newburgh used to do and, and really work as a team. So, that's it. Any questions?
So Taste Newburgh, you want to come on back up and, and we'll continue where we left off? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Carmen. I'll address your question. I think that's a fantastic question, and you should be asking for data and understanding the return on your investment. We have an outstanding executive director at Taste who's tracking tons of data. We've contracted in the past with a company called Datify that helps. Are you coming to whisper in my ear? Feel free to jump in at any point. That tracks visitor data, and actually, I believe taps into cellphone information. And so it really can see how many people are coming here, where they're coming from, and how long they're staying. So all of that information is available. I don't personally have it all memorized, because there's so much of it. But there's tons out there. I think one of the biggest things to look at, too, is just the increase in TLT revenue. It's gone up quite drastically, as Phil mentioned, and especially in a time when overall visitation is down statewide. The fact that Newburgs is still increasing speaks volumes to the work of Taste Newburgh and specifically our staff.
I think this is more of a statement, but so I, too, have been on the TLT Committee since its origin, and probably share the perspective that Lonnie just shared, that this was not the way that I remember its origin. And I'm just going to say on the record that we have been having discussions as a stable table for the last three months. And this has been a painful process for me, and I just, and a little out of character, but I do feel like I need to say on the record that I'm really shocked that Taste is coming, and instead of collaborating, actually asking to now take money from the Chamber. It makes me really sad that we've chosen as, people in this room are institutions to Newburgh, and I really can't believe, I'm like shaking. I really can't believe that we've chosen as three organizations that do the best work in Newburgh. And I'm not discounting what Taste has done. I, up until right this moment, would have thrown down for Taste. And I think coming in here today without having a conversation with the Chamber about cutting their $45,000 is really shocking, and it actually speaks to my original concern that the contract was about to be pushed through back in November without informing the Chamber of the ask for a six-year contract. That was the question, that was my original question that I asked for the council to understand. I would never be comfortable with any organization getting a six-year contract. That's too long. We don't know what three years down the road is going to be. Six years, I've never signed a contract in my career, and I am never going to be comfortable signing a contract for six years with taxpayer dollars, especially since we don't know the feasibility of urban renewal. We don't know the feasibility of the waterfront master plan. And frankly, I'm not in support of moving any contract forward today, because I will not be a leader that allows the institution, the institutions of Newburgh that have built Newburgh, that are in the room today, and that are not in the room today, that absolutely I respect and would do anything asked by lots of people in this room. We owe better to Newburgh, and it makes me really sad, and I hope that our executive directors and our presidents and our vice presidents can sit down and hash this out. That was my ask. I don't know what's so difficult about that, to be frank. I have to reforecast every quarter, and that's all I was asking for, was to consider in a non-public setting to do this. And now I feel like I've been pushed into a corner to make my public statement about this that I never wanted to make, and I wanted it to be discussed behind closed doors, because that is good leadership. And so yeah, I hope that we can, I hope that we can work this out, because it's sad to me that we would blindside each other like this, so.
I'd like to speak a little bit to the stable table conversations, because it did become quite an event, quite an ordeal. And like I've said to our board, it became a very unstable table. And so we had to come to a decision as to, we can't come to an agreement, so we need to approach the city with what our needs are and what our asks are. And that's what all three of us have come to this meeting for. So I don't believe that anything has been done maliciously by any means. We've all come to the table with what our ask is. It really is up to the city to decide how these funds are allocated.
I'd like to add to that, Phil. I completely agree with everything that Phil just stated. We fully support these other two organizations and agree that they've done so much to build the Newburgh that we all know and love. None of this is to say that we don't support those organizations and don't want them to flourish. We absolutely do. We also want to align our funding structure, this city's funding structure, with the state funding structure for the transient lodging tax program. And that clearly specifies how tax dollars should be used, and we do believe that the best use and the most in line with the ORS 320, 300 that I've mentioned multiple times is to split that funding between Taste Newburgh and the city's general fund. So this is not at all to tear down the other organizations. It's to advocate for good stewardship and align with a given program.
You've mentioned the ORS a few times. In that ORS, does it also say this money can be spent for tourism-related facilities?
I believe it does.
And does the Chamber qualify as a tourism-related facility?
I think to an extent the city can decide that. They have a visitor center that you can definitely argue is a tourism facility. However, I would really encourage council to look at how that is truly being used, and is that the best use of funds to best serve tourists?
So I've been involved with Elise and in the discussions pretty much from the start, I believe, and the, the purpose, well, when we started this discussion, I pointed out that this was going to be a no-win scenario. Nobody's going to be happy with the outcome. I mean, everybody's not going to be happy with the outcome, no matter what we decide. I had a discussion with Terry Emery about the needs for the downtown coalition, because the downtown coalition is performing remarkably well here in Newburgh, given the resources that they've had in the past. And I agree with them that we need to stabilize them somewhat. We, I would like to see three things done, and they are on our objectives for this year. I would like to see the downtown area cleaned up of our town and maintained better. I would like to see a much better Christmas light display on First Street next year, something along the lines of what McMinnville does. And I also want to support the Main Street program so that we can take advantage of some of what they do. And all of these things are best done by the downtown coalition. But the transient lodging taxes is really not supposed to be used for that kind of use. So my solution, after talking to Terry and finding out how much money they were, I went to the city manager, and I asked, could our city support them at a particular level, which isn't going to be what they need? And Will told me that he thought he could find $15,000 or $20,000 in the budget annually to do that. And then I also committed to helping the organization go out and seek matching funds from some of the businesses. Now, Lonnie has told me I'm being too cheap, and I had that conversation with the city manager today. And I like that attitude, by the way. And the city manager over there is smiling, because that's all he can get away with right now, so thank you, Will. As far as the Chamber goes, I don't know why for sure they started giving the Chamber $45,000. Chambers are generally not supported by the cities that they are encompassed in. And our Chamber is not the Newburgh Chamber of Commerce. It's the Chehalis Valley Chamber of Commerce. And the Chamber has the unique ability to sell memberships to its customers. The city doesn't have that ability. Neither does Taste Newburgh. Neither does, well, the downtown coalition, to some extent, can do that. So I don't understand why that is part of the discussion. I was not in favor of taking the $45,000 away, but we all know that the reason that they're getting that $45,000 gives the city one or two, for whatever reason, give them some money, so they decided that they're going to have the visitor center, which is a relic of the past. These people that come to Newburgh these days have a computer in their hand, and that's what they rely on for the services. So if the council wants to go ahead and continue that $45,000 payment, I will support that. I, I, I don't, I didn't want to make a big deal out of this. I think that we have a pretty good program, with the exception of what we've been doing with the downtown coalition. So that's my opinion. I think that we should go ahead and approve the contract with Taste to continue what they do. And I think the city should support the downtown coalition in a much better way. So that's my opinion. I don't know why the Chamber doesn't do some fundraisers. They used to years and years ago. Now, I've heard, well, they don't have staff. Well, you know, the Kiwanis Club that I belong to, about 35 members, we've done a golf tournament every single year for like 13, 14 years now, and we're all volunteers. So I don't know why there's enough of us that are members of the Chamber, you know, why we couldn't all pitch in and do some type of a major fundraiser to help out. I think it can be done. I, I do agree somewhat with you, Mayor, that, you know, if the visitor center, I'm not so sure if that's a needed thing anymore. But perhaps to help save some money, maybe there's an, I don't know, but maybe there's enough room in the Little Yellow House off of Blaine Street that the Parker Metcalf owns, that, you know, the Chamber and the downtown coalition can, you know, join forces and split the costs there. If, I don't know, I don't think the Parker Metcalf even charges anything. Didn't used to. So anyway, there's an option. And it's not that far off of the main drag, so I think there's ways of looking at it. I do feel like if we were to eliminate funding to the Chamber, I don't want it to be done all at once. I would like to have it done over a three-year timeframe, so that they can organize and come up with some other options. But I do think we should help the downtown coalition. I, I think sprucing up our town, I wish that there was, everybody down there felt like, I feel like, for my building is you show pride of ownership and take care of your building. And a lot of people do. I drove down through town specifically just a few days ago to really look and go, oh, that business, they're taking care of things. Well, that one isn't. Why aren't they? I wish we could figure that one out. But a lot of the chambers are not, you're right, are not being sponsored or, you know, held up financially by the city, so I don't know if we should be doing that with tax funds, but I don't, I wouldn't want to just cut it off. I would want to spread it out maybe over a three-year period to let them adjust. And, you know, if McMinnville pays more in memberships than what we do, well, then maybe that's the cost of doing business. We have to pay a little higher memberships if we want to to get a better value out of what the Chamber is doing. I am. I've been a member of the Chamber for probably, let's see, I've been in business 43 years into this month. I think it's, I think it was like 40, 40 or 41 years that I've been a Chamber member. I'm a Chamber member only because I feel like I should be part of this town that I love and that I was raised in, but I don't always feel like I get the value. I'm just, I'm part of the team, but I don't feel like I get enough out of it to really justify my membership. And it's not a slap in the face to anybody at the Chamber. It's just a fact of how I feel, and I think a lot of other business people that are Chamber members that I've talked to. But I'm not going to stop being a member.
May I speak to the Yellow House conversation? Because, you know, as you know, Taste Newburgh resides in that building, rent-free, thanks to the CPRD. And I agree with some of you that this is the new tourist visitor center. People are still, people are going to use the visitor center. I mean, some people will. I'm guilty of not ever using one. But there shouldn't be one there. So if we can have a location where we can have three entities that do focus on tourism, beautification of the city, bringing to life what the city can do, if we can actually put the stable table literally under the same roof, so that we can have communication and collaboration happening instantly, I think that's a that's a wonderful opportunity for us, and it's saving us some money at the same time.
Boy, I have lots of questions. I would love to know how the Chamber, it's a pretty steep membership price. I remember considering it. It was $300 a year. I would love to know where their funds go. Where's, Meryl, you probably know.
I see the former Chamber president back there with his.
Oh, sure.
Would you like to hear, pose your question, too, Andrew?
Yeah, and I have a couple more, just.
You can stay there. Just pull another chair up.
I think there's several questions that pertain to the Chamber that have been said, and statements at least. Especially pertaining to visitor center, you know, the city had asked the Chamber to do that. And at the time, we got an actual percentage of TLT, I believe, and it was negotiated later without our knowledge to be a flat rate. And so I think what we're asking here is just to go back to that percentage, which is less than what we're currently getting, which I think is great. And when it comes to the visitor center, it was a thing of the past. You just heard the Taste Board saying that they've made a map that they're very proud of, that goes into visitor centers. They spent $2,500 of their own money for that. A paper map. I don't know how often those get used. Like you said, Mr. Mayor, those are a thing of the past. So I think that that's an important, as far as visitor center goes, if we're going to talk about that, then maybe that is on the table, but I think it would be wrong of us to not point that out, that, you know, that organization is, that's where they're even putting their money right now, that they're proud of. So, yes, Ms. Counselor Gilbert.
In a general sense, I guess, how does the Chamber use its membership dues? What do those cover?
So, remember, there's a lot of benefits for being a Chamber member. It really kind of depends upon the organization, right, and the business and what they're looking for. So some of that is networking, some of that is programming, so greeters, chamber after-hours, things like that. We do programming, lunch and learns. We provide certificate of origin stamps for businesses that are that are exporting products internationally, so that's part of what we provide. We provide just general business resources, so if a business has a question about something, then we can help. You know, what we like to say is if you don't know, or if we don't know what the answer is, then we know someone who does know the answer. And that's, you know, that's one of our biggest assets, I think. Um, biggest assets, I think. I think part of the, the conversation really here is around like. The visitor center and the chamber. And I understand the, the questions about the chamber and the chamber membership. But really what this is a conversation about, or I think what, the, the key points of this is that, um. We operate the visitor center and we keep those, um, some of that in terms of like bookkeeping and funding, we keep those things separate. Um, so we have an estimation of how much, you know, staff time goes to staffing the visitor center. And the income that comes in for the visitor center from the city. Um, and, um. So that, those, those two things are kind of kept separately so that we can have a clear indication of what goes to what. Um, in, in terms of, um, the, the two point five percent. The, the request really is to just, as Bubba said, um, to move from a flat rate to a percentage. And the percentage is less than the forty-five thousand dollars. Um, because. Partly we want it to be a sustainable amount. We hear, we hear the comments, we hear the conversations. We've been participating in the conversations for the last three months with, um, the downtown coalition and Taste Newburgh. And, um, we really do think that Taste, or, uh, we value the work of Taste Newburgh. And we also think that the downtown coalition should have, um. A, a, a percentage of funding as well. And so we're here, you know, as an organization who sees the value in the other two. Organizations of the stable table, um, asking for a little bit less than what we normally receive, um, but just a percentage.
I think it's also important to state that since I've been involved, and I think historically the chamber's been a partner. Um, to the city, to Taste, and to NDC. When, uh, Toons on Tuesday was gonna go away. The chamber stepped in and took it over. And that brought, that brings people to town, let's be honest. Last year, uh, NDC put on, and Taste put on the Truffle Fest, which brought a lot of people to town. NDC didn't have the funding to do it anymore. The chamber stepped in to help Taste. There's examples of that over and over and over again, of places that we've been a partner. In work that might not necessarily be ours. Um, and so Counselor McBride, when you talk about the value. That you may or may not get, you know, at those markets or other things, those are. Vendors that don't have storefronts, that that's really where they pay their bills, is going to those markets. And most of them, or a lot of them, are local vendors that show up to our Wednesday market. The NDC puts on every year, volunteer, pretty much for free, right? It, it takes a lot of their staff time to do that job. So I think it's important to note that all of these organizations in the past have been really great partners. And then unfortunately, when it comes to money, we start to fight. Uh, and I find that very sad. I don't want to have these fights. I think that we're better, stronger together. I, with Counselor Holloman, I, I am taken back at the request and without even talking to. The chamber or NDC really, that, um, of what that was gonna look like for us. Because we do depend on that to actually pay our bills, uh, per our agreement with the city. So. So that, that, that's hard and it's, and it's a little frustrating, uh, if I'm gonna be honest with you and speak candidly, so.
Just, just to clarify if I may, uh, uh, the, the conversation about the Little Yellow House. We are, as our board president said, in year five of a ten-year contract in the building that we are in. And, um. These decisions happened before I was a staff member. They happened before our current executive driver, director was a staff member. Um, but my understanding was it was a request of city council for the, the chamber to move into this building. So, um, we are year five into a, a ten-year contract. So a conversation about moving into another building would, in my opinion, need to consider what that would look like.
And nobody, nobody on council should have any concern over whether. Where the Chamber of Commerce chooses to do business, or in fact, how they choose to do business, because we don't fund the Chamber of Commerce. You're an independent organization.
Absolutely. It's the visitor center, which we, we staff and operate.
I was just gonna say that, um, first, the visitor center, I mean, I, Meryl will attest. I had, since I started on city council, felt like the visitor center should not be a thing. So I have very conflicting viewpoints between all of this. Now, I changed my mind, and I was actually a proponent of the forty-five thousand dollars going away from the chamber up until about two years ago. When the stable table started. And the stable table did work for a while. My frustration of where we're at today is that I feel that. Up until November, when we started having these conversations, we always heard as a council, what was presented to us was that the table is stable. And now, when we've asked really one question, the table's no longer stable, and I don't think the table really was ever fully stable. And that is concerning to me as to what information we're receiving as a council. I also wanted to just make a comment that, um, when, um, Britta shared, um. I understand fully why Taste would wanna have the thirty-five percent. I think that in a, in a perfect world. Thirty, sixty-five percent, seventy percent would go to, would go to a DMO, right? Um, we can't afford that. And I wouldn't support that at this moment in time, to be clear. But. The statement that we, that Taste would like to align to the state practice or the state recommendation. I don't think that that is an objective statement. I feel like that is a subjective statement. There are examples around the state. From very high tourism economies, that what is being proposed of the two-point-five, the two-point-five, the thirty and the sixty-five. That there is shared revenue amongst organizations. So I wanna be really careful that we're not taking as complete fact. Any statements made by any organization today. There are a lot of ways to split TLT. And frankly, I do think that the chamber is not prepared to give a full presentation today as you were not on the agenda. And I do still think that we need to have a full conversation around TLT and the legalities. That have been brought forward today, which I don't agree with. I feel like there are plenty, we have already answered this question multiple times in public session. That what is being requested by NDC and the chamber is absolutely legal per ORS statute. So I, and that has been answered on the record by our legal counsel. So I really, really feel that there needs to be an adequate work session, we, where we are reviewing the questions that Peggy is bringing forward. Of what does the chamber spend their money on? Because in reality, there may be things that we as a council would like more detail on of what. TLT is funding and where we want to see the organizations partner more effectively. And my hope is, and I know that I'm being super direct, but my hope is that we can get to a place that all three organizations. Can live with, because where we spend our money is what we value. And if, if we wanna say that we don't value the visitor center, then I think that should be an intentional decision, as you're saying, to step down in three years. I could support something like that, but we need to have a planful discussion when the executive director. From the chamber is here to have a full-blown conversation about tourism programming and where we want our money to be spent.
Okay. I, I have honestly been preparing for this for the last few weeks. Before I even got elected, this forty-five thousand has been talked about. So this is a known amount, and I never really understood exactly, you know, what was going on. I've heard the stable table, didn't really understand. Now I'm the representative on Taste, so I go to their meetings. And I, I've seen what they, what they do. Um, I've been to three or four of them, and I'm honestly very impressed. So. Before I came here, I spent probably two weeks researching. TLT chambers. I haven't met with you guys, but, um, I did do a lot of research. Um, to make sure I understood how the funds could be spent and. I'm elected, so my constituents depend on me to choose where. Their tax dollars are going. These are difficult, I mean, these are difficult decisions. You guys, I see you guys, you're in the community. It's very difficult to, to sit up here and go, well. But that's what I, I've been elected for. I have to look at things objectively and go. Is this the right thing, even though it's difficult? And I'm not saying I'm gonna go either way, but that's what I was elected to do. So I guess I could. Go over some of the things that I found out. Um. So first, when this came up, and we've been having talks about this for months, so. I don't, I don't understand where you guys say this is surprise, that it's on the agenda, because we've been talking about this. There's been numerous meetings. I.
We weren't given any notice.
Okay, well, that has been talked about for a long time. This has been on the table, Taste knew about it. I know you guys had to have known about it. That's why I'm surprised. I can't hear what you're saying, but I'm surprised, I honestly was surprised you guys weren't on the agenda, cuz I wanted to hear you. And I've heard you guys speak at stable table meeting. I, I thought you would be on the agenda, cuz I wanna hear all sides. I'm not, I don't wanna be just biased. Um, so in my studies, first what I did was I called around, cuz I wanted to find out. So I knew you guys. Um, the controversy was you guys were being paid forty-five thousand a year, and that, I've heard that for several years. And this is the first time it's being addressed, actually. So, which I'm glad about. Um, so first I thought, okay, is it normal for chambers to be subsidized? So I called McMinnville. I called Tuallerton, Sherwood, Malala, Tigard. I spent the day doing this. And I, and I talked to people that run down, their downtown. None of them are subsidized by the city. None of them. Now, that's what they told me. I asked them, are you subsidized by the city? None of them were. McMinnville especially, they are all fully funded by memberships and fundraising. Okay, so I know that much. So I also did research on what the TLT could be used for. I read all the ORS three-twenty dash three-hundred, what it can be used for. So I know you guys are legally collecting it because you have a visitor center. Okay, so that is a legal reason to, to collect it. But also, um. There's two things that you can use specifically, you can use TLT for. So it's tourism promotion, and that's what you guys do. But also, you are to be bringing people from fifty miles away. It's not just somebody from Sherwood. It's fifty miles away, it specifically says that. So here's, here's something that I grapple with. Um, and this is how I see it. Taste, they get all their money from tourists. They get it. But the problem is, you guys are supposed to, the, the chamber has to get their own money, and so does NDC. It doesn't just come to them. So I think that's part of the problem, is Taste just has that bucket. They don't have to fundraise. I know, I have not. I'm sure it's very difficult, what you guys are doing. So I see that as, oh, they have an easy bucket of money, let's go after some of that. They have a lot, let's go. It's just how I see it. Okay, um, so, um, I also know. They, they have done a good job. They, they have, they've come to us several times. They have to allocate where all their money is going. How they're using it, they have to show. And as we've heard, they have increased tourism. When the state is down eight percent. Ta, so ta, my point is Taste is doing something correctly. Now, when I look at the forty-five thousand, and I know what Taste could do with forty-five thousand, I think, okay. This is, this is public money that we're supposed to figure out the best way, that's why we're elected, to figure out the best purpose of it. So I know you guys technically have a legal way of using TLT, but we've heard from Bill. We, what we have heard, the, the, um. What is your place called? The, the, um. The, the what? The, the cha, the visitor center. The visitor center is not. It's just not where people go anymore. It's just, it's, it's just not where it's at anymore. Um, so I'm concerned that we're, and I know, and you also said. That you're using it to subsidize your bills. So. Okay, you guys, hold on, you guys have said that several times, that you're using it. So I know legally you can use it for tourism. We know that. I know you've said that people are using it, but Taste, they have proved, they have to show where all their money goes. I haven't seen any reports where you guys, where you guys are actually using, using the forty-five thousand. So my concern is, you're in a building you can't afford. And you guys know it. You're in a building you can't afford. You operate a visitor center that's not really being used. And I have to look at it objectively, is the forty-five thousand the best place for that money? And that's where I'm concerned. I would not be doing my job as a city council if I did not say that. At this point, I know you guys do a lot in the community. I've seen it. I, I'm not saying you're not. But I, at this point, I've seen what Taste can do. I know what, who they collaborate with. I mean, I would support them. I know that money, that forty-five thousand would go to tourism, and that would increase our tourism. Right now, I don't see the, I don't see a return on investment with that money, and I'm sorry to say that. Um, so I would probably get behind Mike with. Um, working that down, but that's just how I see it. From all the research that I've done, and it's nothing personal, it's just what I was elected to do. Um, so I, I would say Taste has a proven track record. Um, and I just don't know that you guys do anymore. I'm really sorry to say that.
You wanna speak to?
All right. We, uh, it's nine fifteen. I'm gonna have to take a break here in a minute. So my question, counsel, is, are we ready to vote on this side? If we, if we are, then let's do that. If not, let's decide if we, what we're gonna. Whether we're gonna table it to the next meeting or, or what. Hang on just a minute. The, uh. Will, how much time do we have before you have to have this settled, settle before the budget?
And if I was to channel my inner Katie, she would probably say. April. It would be good to have this settled in April.
So question to counsel is, where do we wanna go from here? Do we, are we ready to vote? Do we need to, more discussions and deliberations? Um, do we wanna table it till a future meeting?
Mayor, there was a lot of, um, data asked about us just in that one statement. Where, you know, how much visitor center we get, and, you know, so a lot of questions there. So I think, uh, as the chamber. I think we would support a, a work session.
Let me, let me finish what I'm doing here.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Derek, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to make a motion that we, um, all come together in a work session. There's lots of ideas from NDC, there's ideas from Taste, there's ideas from the chamber. There's ideas from this council that I think all need to be fleshed out. I, um, I'm not convinced. I'm not saying that Taste is not doing a great job. I'm just, I, I just, I want the data to support it. No, 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 no. Also, I keep hearing this, it has to be fifty miles away, but it also can be people from Sherwood who do spend the night here. So there's lots of things to discuss, and I just think that's where I'm at. So that's my motion, is that we have a, a work session around this. Topic.
Okay, I mean, we're having a work session right now, but so, are you saying that you wanna, you wanna table this to a different meeting? You wanna complete it now? What are we?
Well, this wasn't set up as a work session. So they haven't had an opportunity to present, um, a better plan of what they'd like to do in the future. All of their data that they, they, that they wanna show us. I had questions for Taste that I was not able to get answered. Um, and, you know, NDC also didn't get an opportunity to sit here and, and go through all of this either. So that's just where I'm at, and. So I, I just want the work session.
Well, I think it's important to really clarify that I asked for a work session last meeting. I know another counselor has asked for a work session a couple of times. It was not on the agenda. Asking someone to come in, in a meeting, during a meeting, is very different than asking an executive director to prepare. As Taste has had the opportunity to do so. And I wanna just really clarify. The, uh, that I do agree with you that the forty-five thousand has. Has been a discussion since I've been on council. But. The November contract that came forward. Had the forty-five thousand dollars included. So my frustration and where my frustration came from. And when I said that it got blindsided today was that the recommendation that was brought forward today removed it. And that was not a conversation in any of the stable table conversations. It was never on the table to remove that forty-five thousand in the last three months. It's always been a conversation for six years and I would frankly entertain it. I would. But that's the nature of, I, it's, I don't feel like it was in good faith. By not inviting formally, as was requested by a couple of us for it to be a work session. It feels. Strange why that wasn't an agenda item and why we didn't even call the chamber to invite them formally to this conversation. Or N D C. So I do agree and would like to second the motion that Derek just, just requested.
Okay, so we are gonna table this discussion till the next meeting, Will. And we will start, we'll call it a work session and we'll invite all the necessary parties back. Is that, is that okay? Go ahead.
And just as a procedural point, given that there's been a motion and a second. Could we capture a vote on doing that action, sir? Just to make sure the, the record is correct.
Discussion? May I give my comment?
We do have a, we do have a motion and a second on the table. And the motion is to take this, to bring this back. At a future date with, for a work session. Is there any more discussion on that?
Yes, now that everybody knows, I would love. Data. I want data. Plans from both. I don't want to vote on anything unless I know. Where you want the money to go and I like taste. We know where it's going for the most part. They're held accountable, so.
I think that that's what we're asking is for the opportunity to prepare data.
Well, and your discussion is supposed to be on the motion on the table, which is, are we gonna bring this back to a future meeting?
Yes, but I want to make sure they know to bring all their ass, all their numbers. I want to make sure everybody's prepared. Because I thought that everybody would have been prepared. N D C came last council meeting, so I don't understand where we're coming from where nobody knew about.
I'm, I'm having a great time here.
Okay, sorry to take your time.
I'll stay here till midnight if you guys want to stay here till midnight, but I am trying to move this along.
Yes.
If that's what.
I am fine with that.
On the motion on the table, which is to table this until a future meeting and bring it back as a work session. Jerry.
I would love to just share because I think I would love to hear data from everybody because I would actually disagree because. I'm new, so I'm gathering information, but the data that was shared tonight from taste and what I recall from a presentation. When I was an audience member feels a hundred percent correlational. And I don't feel like I've ever gotten data that the money we are spending has good outcome with it. Like, are those phone pings that we're getting? Like, that's great, but are those because of money from taste? Or is that because I'm guessing that the Allison also has a wicked marketing budget? And so how are we attributing which marketing budget is actually being the most successful?
Work with me here. We have a motion on the table.
The contract itself is also not okay. I'm really uncomfortable with the six-year contract.
Okay, so you're.
Lack of K P I's.
So it sounds like what you're saying is that you would like to bring it back in a work session.
And address the contract in a work session.
Well, the contract has to be addressed in a business session, but that, I, I get what you mean. So is there any more discussion on the motion on the table? All right. All in favor of bringing this back at a future council meeting to a work session signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Nay? All right, we'll put this on next, next. Next meeting. So let's move on. Thank you very much, folks in the audience. Y'all get to come back and do this in two weeks, so. All right, the next, actually, the next item on the agenda is a short break. All right, the next item on our agenda is the Tuolton Valley. Potential transfer of property. Are you presenting on this?
The item that lies before council this evening is a motion. To direct the city attorney to work on the transfer of Station Twenty to T V F and R to allow for a complete rebuild of the structure. After a round of discussions with T V F and R and separately, a pre-application meeting with city planning staff. T V F and R has proposed that the city transfer the existing Station Twenty structure and property. To enable them to more easily complete a tear down and rebuild at the site. And I have attached a letter that they sent to us. After giving this considerable thought, including an examination of the existing I G A. Studying it for key terminology that was not found in the current legally approved building code. The city manager came to realize fairly quickly that the way the I G A is structured, there is no. Way that the city could receive real compensation for the property for this. Very dramatic change to the building. T V F and R, it was never envisaged. I think it would be fair to say, although I wasn't here then, but the chief has backed me up on this with his recollection. It was never envisaged that the building would be completely torn down. And indeed, at the time when this was written, it was thought that it might move elsewhere. Well, the way the I G A is written, there is a phrase, and it's the critical phrase. Which is make modifications. Make modifications is not a recognized term in the building code of Oregon. So whereas I had assumed that we, meaning the council, had a dog in this hunt. And could potentially. Charge T V F and R substantial real dollars for such a aggressive plan and a useful plan, I might add. It turns out that we do not have a leg to stand on in that regard. This is the reason why staff recommends that we agree to this proposal. And work towards their objective so as to secure the benefits of a new station in Newburgh. Um, shall I go through the executive summary, et cetera, since it is somewhat late or have you guys all? So a potential motion might be, I move to accept the proposal from T V F and R. To transfer Station Twenty to facilitate their complete rebuild of the structure and direct the city attorney to initiate the process. To do so. Now, as you, as you can see, a small sum was suggested. To pay us for our administrative costs of having to do a lot line adjustment and some other planning work. And that's, as they say, all the market will bear, given the language of the I G A. So had the honorable Mr. Walker written the I G A, I think there would have been more robust language potentially, but who knows? So that's, that's it. Any questions, folks, about this?
So if we transfer this, this, uh, station to them. When you say we don't have a leg to stand on, it's because there is a, what, a ninety or ninety-one year lease that we have with them. Are we giving them the real property that the building sets on also? Or is it just the building in this, in the location?
The request was to transfer the, with a lot line adjustment, the parcel and the building. And that's simply because your number is, is correct. It's ninety-one years before we come back to anything that the city could possibly do with it. One idea was floated that perhaps we could ask Mr. Walker to add a right of first refusal. Um, as another element. So in other words, if they ever decided that they wanted to vacate the property, no longer have it be a fire station. That we would get the right to offer to, to get the property back, so.
And I was, I was going to suggest that because that's. Because I, they're not gonna be around here for the next ninety years. They're gonna, they're probably gonna move this to some other place. You know, in the town. And I would love to have that, if James could put that in something for us. Because I don't want to lose this property. They'll move the station at some forty, fifty years down the road. We could still use this property, so I don't want to, I think first right refu- refusal was the smart thing to do. I, I don't want to. Be able to lose it completely.
And so I, I, I think that's a sage suggestion. It does, it does, their, their command staff at least are saying that they intend to be here for the long haul, but. Who knows what future population growth patterns might happen? This would provide us with a fallback position. It would also encourage continuing and excellent relationships between ourselves and T V F and R. The one thing I didn't want to see happen because of safety was to see the station move out of town. Because I like this quick response times that we get, so. So that, that is the proposal in response to their letter that is on the table.
Well, I have a bit of a different take on this. What we're in effect doing is selling them the land that. Our fire station sits on for fifty thousand dollars. And then you're gonna put a clause in there that if they ever don't want it, we get to buy it back at.
No, not buy it back. I, I think that I give it back.
Well, they. We don't, we don't need to. We don't need to do that. All we need to do is nothing and let them build a building on a lot that we're gonna own someday. I mean, to sell that lot for fifty thousand dollars does not make any sense to me. It's all the, the guns and butter thing. You know, certain assets you don't sell and real estate is one of them unless if there's a compelling reason. Uh, like if we want to declare, we, I, I would think we'd have to declare it surplus property. Uh, to sell this and go through that process. So, I mean, if we do nothing at all, we don't get to fifty grand, but we retain the ownership of that property. And in ninety-one years, we will have that property back at whatever it's worth in those days, which would be a lot more than fifty grand. Go ahead, Mike.
Well, I agree. Let's, uh, my opinion is. We give them the okay to tear the building down, but I want to retain the, the property. Because I think it'd be less than ninety years and they'll be, they'll be moving to another location because of population growth around here. And I, yeah, we just sit and let it come back to us. And we missed the fifty thousand, but in the long run, the property is gonna be worth a whole lot more than that. Twenty years from now.
Is there a motion there somewhere?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to hear from staff again about what Mike is proposing. And the mayor.
And forgive me, I may not have quite caught up on that, what, what you just asked. What was it?
What, what do you, what's your thoughts about their, their proposal? Um, and what is TV, what do you think T V F and R would say? But what, what would happen to this whole thing if? What do you think would happen if we, that's the way we went?
Um, I think, first of all, when I, when I dug into this, I was actually looking for more advantage to our position. Than what, than what we have. I suspect that the likelihood is quite high that they would still go ahead. With the tear down. I don't think that would change. Would it have a negative impact on any other future deals or agreements that we might have with TV and F and R? That's, that's hard to conjecture. It's hard to know for certain. But their position was simply, and so I'm channeling their position right now. Their position was, we're about to put fifteen million dollars, substantial taxpayers' dollars into a completely new station. And it is, it did strike them as bizarre and different from all their other station rebuilds. That they're putting those sort of capital dollars into something that ultimately doesn't belong to them. So that's their perspective. I, I brought it to council tonight and of course, if that's not the will of council, then. And that's that.
Could the concern be that? If they weren't able to do their bill, that they would move. That they would move the station?
They cannot move the station out of City of Newburgh. That's part of their contract being here. They could pick another site within the city of Newburgh. And by that, and I would be in favor, well, we've already had those discussions. That would be my preferred. Option, but there's no reason we can't just leave it alone. Let them build that plant, that station there. And ninety-one years from now, that'll, it'll belong to us.
So at my office, I've got a couple rental spots in, in my building and, and many times I have said, okay. You know, you want to change this, it's, it's tenant improvements. And, you know, I'll give you a long-term lease. Because you're putting up the money, so I'll give you a long-term lease to be able to do it. It's no different than this. They've got a long-term lease. I don't see why it would be a big deal to them. Sure, they're putting fifteen million in, but for goodness sakes, it's. They got ninety-one years to go. That's tenant improvements for them, but we, we just need to keep the property.
All right. That being said, is there any objection to us just moving on to the last item? Hi there. I hope you've had a great time today. Roger, you're not gonna come up with him? All right.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Rossaker and members of the council. I'm Rick Marshall, resident of Newburgh. And I have the honor to serve as the vice chair of your traffic safety commission. And at our most recent meeting in January, the commission, um. Appointed me to be its representative to come have this hopefully brief conversation with you this evening. So thank you for, um, squeezing me in your busy, your full plate, as it were. So I, I have kind of three areas and each of these bullets is unpacked in a later slide. The purpose of the traffic safety commission is spelled out in the municipal code. Uh, our goals are to promote traffic safety. Uh, by conducting investigation, study and analysis as well as educational efforts. And it specifically mentions that we can respond to referrals from your council. Um, the typical activities of our group fall into two broad areas, current operations and long-range planning. In the area of current operations, uh, typically each meeting, we get a, a standing report from the police. And from Public Works on what's going on in the area of traffic safety in each of their departments. Um, another thing that would fall in this category but hasn't happened, um. At all recently is that the code spells out that certain things could come before us as actual public hearings. Um, and as I say, that just doesn't come up very often. So in the absence of, well, excuse me. Um, so we have these reports from police and public works, one of which is the active issues log. This comes from our public works staff support. Um, two versions of it were attached to tonight's agenda materials. Um, the smaller of the two is the version that was before our commission at our meeting in January. The longer, I believe, comes from public work staff is a. Um, it, it includes basically everything since the log was started, as I understand it. Um, including a whole bunch of pages of things that have already been resolved, just to show you the more complete picture of. What the log is about. Um, city staff, both public works and police, receive a lot of requests. Throughout the city, a bunch of which, as you'll not be at all surprised, are on ODOT routes. But there are some that are on city streets and that's, those are the ones we can have anything to say about. Um. Quite a few of the ones that need some attention that we could contribute to. They need, um, some data collection or some other form of professional analysis. So we haven't had the opportunity to have those things happen. So we said, well, wh- what else can we do while we are gathered in support of the city and in support of the safety of our community? So we inherited a work plan from our predecessors, from previous cycles of the commission. They had identified a bunch of things that were admirable tasks. So last year we went through their giant list and. Uh. Kind of rephrased some things that were confusing and. Um, collected some things that really were saying the same thing multiple ways. Uh, and we organized and we realized that quite a few of the tasks they had identified. Fell under a heading we created called long-range planning. There exist in-city documents, a transportation system plan, a bicycle pedestrian plan. A traffic calming policy. You heard about some of these from the ODOT agenda item earlier tonight. Um. Each of these documents, you know, if it's in its best condition, can be a tool to help staff respond to. The things on the giant list, the, the active issues log. So we looked at the, what was the status of these three and the traffic, transportation system plan is scheduled to. Have a more comprehensive overhaul within a couple of years. And it'll probably absorb the bicycle pedestrian plan into it when it happens. Whereas by comparison, there's this thing that calls itself a traffic calming policy, but as we understand it. Had never actually had council approval. So we said, well, sure, that, that's a logical place to start. So we said, well, let's take baby steps. We're, we're treading new ground here. And we put together some thoughts about what we thought such a document could do for the city. And took it only as far as preparing an outline. And that was circulated before your committee and now I need to stop and look at my notes. So, yeah, I'm ready to hit that button. So, um. The, the outline that we put together was I, as I would describe it, rather informally circulated among you. And got the feedback that we needed and I, I am the first one to say. We got the feedback from you that I completely agree is your job. To say within the bigger picture of what's going on with the city, is this or isn't this a priority? And you said to us, it's not a priority and that's your job in relation to our job. So we said, okay. And so at our most recent meeting, the conversation was, okay, so now what? What shall we do? What can we do for you to continue to carry out our mission? Within the context of your priorities for us. So, um, the, the reality of that question is that. There need to be some resources to support the work. Um. We came up with some suggestions to feed you if you want to go this way. Uh, the thing that we think would be logical for us to do with a little bit of support is take the giant list and. Prioritize the things that need attention. Um, look for those things which if they were addressed, they could reduce crashes. They could improve pedestrian safety. They could reduce speeding complaints. Um. So we can, with some additional information, we can work on that list and give staff. A suggestion of how to prioritize the things and make some improvements to improve safety for the community. Um, but we need some support in the form of staff needs to spend some staff time. To do some sorting of the list, to collect some data, to do some analysis. And then ultimately, once we prioritize things, it'll cost some money to implement our suggestions. So, um, the big question, how much money? I don't see, and the commission doesn't see it appropriate that we, um. Amateur volunteers be the ones to answer that question. Uh, we, we feel that we need your counsel to authorize staff. To spend a little bit of time and effort to answer that question. How much money do they need? Cause I know you don't have any money. So, but we're, we're at a bit of a stuck point. So. The bottom, my, my last slide is we're here as volunteers because we want to accomplish good for our hometown. And we are asking for your help to let us know your priorities for spending our time and staff time.
Thank you for your presentation. Um, I'm glad you came because I don't think you guys, since I've been elected, have ever come to council before. So. It's good to see what's going on here, but my question is, um, what? What has been going on before you came here? I mean, all these complaints in the pink, I'm assuming. Are what you want addressed?
Uh, just let me remind myself of the color code.
Um, the ODOT is in yellow, which.
ODOT is in yellow.
You can't do, but there's.
Yellow and orange. And the pink are the things that are in city jurisdiction. And then the white are some things that just got added to the list.
Oh, okay.
Um, that there's some potential to just handle them.
I guess I was under the impression that this was something that was ongoing, but it doesn't sound like it is.
I think, um, the response we get frequently is we need to collect some, some data. Measure some traffic volumes, measure some speed of, of cars on given streets. And that takes some resources that aren't currently allocated. And I may be incorrectly summarizing that, but that's how it sounds to us.
So there are, there are different classes of matters that come before the traffic safety. Uh, plan this list that you see that's compiled. Some, the reason why Sergeant Hagan is there from the police department, because some of these. Are concerns about putting up a, a, a reader board or something more collected connected to normal police patrol work. That is the lesser amount of the volume. But it is one thing that does come through traffic safety. And where there are easy fixes, the police department deals with those as it can. So, another class of things that come through are things that perhaps we can find the time to look at replacing a, a sign. Or a cr- a cross-block stop that's become obscured. And when we have the resources to do that, we do take care of those. Now, of course, there is also a long list of things that we don't necessarily have the resources to take care of. And the question then would become the usual question I have for council, uh, more resources or what would you like me to cut? Ha ha. So it may be that I could pull public works guys off of the tough subgrade work. That they have to do to get ahead of the road surface maintenance, which also helps make traffic safer, safer. But I could pull people off of that, stop that program to deal with some of these other items. Or if there were more resources, perhaps we could spin up a different team to deal with some of these things that are on the list. And I don't have the answer off the top of my head about what dollars are necessary. I've seen the list several times before. Um. It, it looks like hundreds of thousands, not millions for many of the things. For some of the things.
I, 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 I'm going to speculate that that dollar figure maybe is more in. Implementing solutions, but I, I'm hoping the dollar figure for collecting data to. Figure out the solutions is less than that.
A typical speed study is twenty, thirty thousand dollars per location.
It's changed since I retired from working in this field in another state.
The good news is the city has bought some of its own, um, speed detectors. So we actually had, we have done that thing. We, we got a low profile. Speed detector that's good for counts. So we, we can get. We have the equipment to do it. It then becomes a question of staffing priorities as, as it always is. Every time I ask Preston to undertake a new thing, his eyes roll and he goes with what new bodies will? With what new bodies will? You want me to fix the ramp at the back of the library? You want me to pothole on Third Street? You want me to crack and slurry seal on Mountain View Drive? You want me to start to prep for the River Street rehab? With what new bodies will?
Thank you, Robin. Um, I just wanted to say that, you know, I was at their, their meeting in January and. A lot of this was frustration that the council didn't seem to be aware of what's going on. And, um, you know, yeah, they're just looking for some guidance and some resources and. Um, they, I, I got the sense that they felt like they were spinning their wheels for nothing. And so I don't know that that's fair to have a committee that's doing work that goes nowhere. But this is the genesis of this. This is why they're here. They were, they were. People weren't very happy, especially with the response from the, the, uh, traffic calming, uh. Thing that was sent to us a while ago and the responses that was given by council. So I, I said that, um, I would. We, we're gonna start giving, um, presentations back to council about the different committees that we're on and hopefully the communication can improve in that regard. But at the end of the day, they're still looking for what, what, what do you want? What? Do we want them to do?
Are there grants available for some of that work? Because I'm on the Historic Preservation Commission and a lot of. Their work is through grants. I don't know if you guys have that ability, but is that? I mean, all, this all looks like ongoing traffic study needed. So I don't know. Is that something you can apply for a grant?
So I imagine that they're very likely, could be grants available, but I doubt that volunteer citizen commission members are who gets to apply for them.
Uh, so we actually have a grant writer in the city because I repurposed an admin assistant to turn it into, to the, turn that person into a grant writer. So point us at. Any grant that you might be aware of and we will write it. Okay.
I'm just speculating that I think they exist in the world. I, I'm not directly aware of them. I would, I would look to staff to answer that question in my ideal sense.
Actually. Um, Joya from the, uh, county would be a really good person. I think she's so helpful. And I think she would be a really good person to reach out to, to ask about any sort of grant opportunity. She's always sending me ones and she's really helpful.
I guess my question is more basic than that. What is it they wanna do? I mean, what are, what are we asking them to attempt to do for us? What's the purpose of the traffic safety committee?
They have all these things listed here that.
Yeah, these are all.
From citizens that they need a study. I mean, it sounds like we can't address them. I, I, I guess I don't, I, I don't really know how this has worked, but they all say ongoing traffic count, study needed. So. It looks like the city is helpless.
I agree with you. Um, it feels like there needs to be some sort of format similar to Planning Commission or Affordable Housing Commission that you have the ability to then, you know, come on a. I don't know, regular basis of some sort to come and bring forward your proposals and recommendations that you're. You know, deciding upon, just like we do in our other commissions. And I, I, I don't think we've ever had that since I've been on council with Traffic Safety Commission. So. I would support something like that. And then if there was a monetary ask or a, um, ability to support a grant. Application, that would be a good time for that to be brought forward too.
Like, for example, if the city was prepared to see rates increases to pay for some additional tech ones. In public works, which is the type of staff level person you would use for that. Then obviously the city would hire some tech ones and then tech ones in public works are trained to use this type of equipment and then they could do the work as directed.
I'm just, just pick an item here. Uh, this is in the pink, so that's Newburgh, from what I understand. Uh, traffic safety issue. East, East Third Street, Meridian Street, Newburgh. A stop sign at this four-way res- intersection would be, would should be placed. There are cars commonly speeding by accidents occurring and pedestrians, okay. Um. Staff put a comment in here, should be noted that stop signs are not safe or effective means of slowing down traffic. I, that's, this is all the traffic calming. Verbiage that they use that they're teaching in their traffic schools that none of us understand. But I guess, is this an item just because somebody's put this on C-click Fix? Do we want to empower this committee to go and, and look into this? I mean, obviously they're not gonna do a traffic study and whoever said that, I, I think is just trying to, uh. Give an answer that makes this go away and they move on to the next thing. But, uh, uh, I mean, is this the kind of work we want the traffic safety committee to do? Well, that's, nothing is the obvious answer. That's what's happened so far with this thing. Uh, you know, one person wants a, a stop sign. So how much staff time do we put into determining whether or not that one person is correct?
Well then, I guess I'm also curious. So one of these things in the pink is actually something that I submitted because. They're like, the day, like, it was like the day after I was elected, I literally had three different neighbors show up at my door and say, this intersection is a problem. There's been these accidents. There's no stop signs. And, and then I had the luxury of witnessing an accident like the next day. So I emailed Will and was like. I've gotten three complaints. Plus now I'm sitting here looking at an act. I think I may have sent a picture to a council person at that time saying, here's an accident in my. What do I do? Uh, or maybe I sent the picture to you. And so I, thinking I was doing the right thing, said to my three neighbors who showed up at my door, I know how to, I know who to email. I'll submit a thing. And so now I guess from a transparency standpoint, all of these people think that I have done something to help address the situation and. But, but what is, I guess, state to our constituents then if there was like no opportunity for follow-up or feedback or communication? And it's just sitting in government limbo land forever.
Yeah, I mean, that, that exactly is, you know, my concern is there's this black hole. That our citizens, I'm, oh, Russell Johnson, I'm a member of the commission, sorry. I'm an resident of Newburgh. Anyway, that, my concern is that people are, are asking for help and it goes into a black hole. And we have no feedback for them unless they see something being done. And not everything required that they're on the list requires a study. I mean, some of them are known areas, you know, that. And like I said, it just might need a better sign or a more visible sign. It may need some paint. I don't know. But that's what we wanna look at. It's like, okay, this could use a sign or better sign or, or, you know, like one intersection that. You know, I'm, I'm more concerned with and we, we know there's a big study being done sometime because there's no funding, but at. Illinois and North Maine, is it right? And, you know, so the quest had been, how about like not allowing more than one car to enter the intersection at a time? Like a sign that says, says that. Some, some people will actually obey that and that will help. Instead of blocking, don't block the intersection. You know, does that require a lot of money? Does that require a study? I don't know. I, I don't see why it should. There's like saying, there's some low hanging fruit here. If we could just address it, people would see that we're doing something. Because we really want this, this, this is the committees and we have a website. Because we really want this, this, this is the committees and we have a website. To get feedback from, from our citizens, we need to address their concerns.
So, not to get too granular, but just to address the one you were speaking about. Doing a, doing a traffic study there, which would then require ODOT to take action and for them to have millions of dollars. Available and for a house to be demolished on that corner. Is this, is a series of variables that are too long to compute. It's kind of a bit Fermi paradoxish. So I think instead, the idea that we're currently looking at, we've had a com- we've had a community meeting about it. We're doing some more surveying of the people who live right there. It's just to block that street off. So that, that double feeding traffic pattern doesn't happen. So that specific example. So far, five out of the twenty-two affected households are in favor of closing that street down with a barricade. We'd like to get it above fifty percent to feel that the people wouldn't. We don't want hurty feelings. So if we can have at least ten households say that they think that's a good solution. That's the solution that we're actually proposing to do. And there's an, there's another flyer going out about that. Is that going out already? Okay, so in near future, um. About the other classes of things, right? Some, in some cases, it, it really will be that, that Brett, the engineer, might say that. S- the signs are not appropriate to a certain intersection i- in his professional opinion. But then there may be other classes of situations where putting a newer, bigger sign in would be a good solution. Or doing some, some traffic survey work. And it's all about resourcing though, right? I understand and totally recognize the frustration of feeling that you're working in a, a dark sandbox and nothing's moving forward. And that's not what we want from our volunteers, because volunteers are the lifeblood of the city. So, um, perhaps. The, perhaps to deal with these sorts of complaints. It, it may be the case if council desires it, that we would add some staffing in this area for this purpose. But, um, I don't control that.
Let me test that. Did you, uh, you turned that item in on C Click Fix? Did you get any results from the city?
No, I have not gotten any feedback yet outside of a, an email from our wonderful city manager that it had been submitted.
So would this not be a really good example of something that the Traffic Safety Committee could take on their plates? And look into and, and either solve the problem or make recommendation as that.
So, so, no, um. Because the next step in responding to any given street intersection with a complaint like this is to collect data. How many cars are approaching in each direction? Uh, how fast are they going? And then with that data, maybe it's a stop sign, maybe it's a yield sign, maybe it's a this, maybe it's a that. We can't ask, we can't answer that question until we have the data. And that's the place we're stuck right now. Then with data, yes, absolutely, it does come to us. Either as a decision staff made and handled and they report to us or as a place where they seek our guidance.
Well, you'll understand that we're not going to spend twenty thousand dollars, I think you said, for a, a traffic study on that particular intersection. So we need to be more creative than that and, and either. Move it up the line or, or tell the neighbors that they're out of luck, uh, in my opinion. But, uh, I don't know, uh. We, your traffic calming as an example. It's not that we don't want to do things like that. It's that we have streets in this town that are not paved. And so they take priority over making a particular neighborhood looking better. Uh, you know, that's what we're always gonna run up with. I mean, basically, if you guys have a project that is gonna spend more than ten grand. The answer is most likely gonna be no, it's not high enough priority to get on, on the list. City has very limited resources. But I would like to find a way to, you know, if, if, if people are sending these things in on C Click Fix. And not getting answers from the city, I would like to correct that situation because I think that the. Citizens deserve to, to hear from us in some fashion.
So I have an idea that I, I did not discuss with the commission before. I'm about to spring it on you just now. Um, the city is spending a, a certain amount of its resources. Supporting the commission in its wheel spinning efforts. And maybe if you just release us from this work. That money could then be used to make things better for the safety on the streets.
Well, what are you saying? I, if I.
Yeah.
Let me see if I quoted correctly. What is the purpose of your commission? Is there a purpose for you to exist, I think is what you're asking. And that's, that's kind of where I started, Will.
It exists because it's in the municipal code.
Well, I'm sorry?
It exists because it's in the municipal code.
Right, but if it's, yes, we can correct that if it doesn't need to exist, of course, so that's, I don't know.
I, I don't wanna throw the baby out with the bathwater. I mean, I feel like we, the intent of the commission is to provide. Citizen feedback in a non-biased form and I, I, I think it's important to have a commission. I think what's being noticed is that the escalation pathway and your access to council for. Resources and, um, communication doesn't exist like the other commissions, which is weird and I don't know. Kind of embarrassed that I've never noticed that, so I'm really sorry. So I just want to apologize. That's really unfortunate and it probably feels like. Um, you're not getting the support that you deserve for doing all of the volunteer, the volunteering that you're doing. I also think that we should empower the commission on a greater level than we are by during bud- during budget season. And every couple of years, um, that we do hear and we, we bring forward the Traffic Safety Commission to say. Hey, we're really noticing, you know, I, I'll speak to Jerry's intersection that I'm at all the time and it is bizarre to me that there's a four-way. Intersection with no stop sign and I've almost gotten in multiple accidents. So I think like there still needs to be the opportunity for citizens to be able to provide that feedback to escalate. Um, but I just think it needs to be a regular cadence that we're hearing from and then, you know, you get to get direction along with council.
Will, do you, what do you want to hear from us on this?
Um, so I think. To do this well, we need another human. Because that person would tackle these things and then other. Non-repair specific tech one activities. They might even be able to double up in some way as an assistant for code enforcement or something, if we want to be very creative. Um, that, that's how we would look at these things and, and get through them, right? But that's a, that's a staffing increase and you know. That has not been the direction of council until now. We've been holding down the staffing. With immense discipline for three years. Cause staffing in this area would create a small piece of rates burden. Because people in public works are paid for but on the rate side of the house, not on the property taxes side of the house. So that's, you know, that's where that would come into play. So that's how we would, we would do that, if we want to do that. The alternative would be to discuss changing the purpose or structure of the Traffic Safety Committee. That's possible. I think repeal is probably not a good idea. Cause maybe, maybe one day we'll have more resources and the, the situation might change. Maybe, it would be a shame to throw the baby out with the bathwater, right? Um. You know, and, and then everything is, when these things come through C Click Fix and they filter through. To your group, when a new one is added, right? I know some of the other paths in the city that see click fix things come through. And the people in charge of each different feed, like for example, Karen Tarmichael's in charge of emergency related things that come in. There is a process to inform the person that their question has been received. If it's not anonymized on the front end. So we did have a problem with C Click Fix for a while where people could report anonymously, which is really annoying. Because then we can't tell them anything about anything. But I know Russ, we were looking at trying to get that anonymization removed. Has that occurred yet or? Okay, good. So you can't make C Click Fix anonymously anymore. So I will convey to Brett, here's one positive thing that came out of this. I will let Brett know that it is my anticipation that he will inform. The members of the public that their complaint has been received. And he is the staff member who is the, the liaison for this group. So that would be his responsibility. And that makes sense. So it may not have happened a hundred percent, but it will going forward.
I, I can't think of anything more demoralizing than to be on a committee, leaving home at night in the cold or hot, whatever, and then. Not having any direction or finding a purpose. But what if we used this commission? Is it a commission or a committee? Commission, so when, um. Citizens have a concern about traffic safety issue, perhaps the intersection like near Jerry. I don't know if the C Click Fix would, could go to them. And then they could, they would see a pattern af- you know, every month or two. They would see potentially a pattern of things that are significant versus the occasional.
The active issues log is transmitted to us at our meetings and, and accomplishes that step. That's how we're notified of everything that comes in.
And who do you get that from?
From Brett in Public Works.
Okay, so yeah, it's kind of like the dog is chasing its tail in a way, doesn't it? I'm so sorry.
Well, no. Well. Okay, I'm gonna recommend formally that we add the Traffic Safety Commission into a regular cadence. For presentation like we would for Affordable Housing Commission. I don't know how often they come, but in some sort of cadence as such. And that the commission we empower to, when you're seeing trends, maybe you got three. See Click Fix on Jerry's intersection. You're like, okay, this is the third one we've seen on this street. Then you would come forward and make your recommendations and you would prioritize them and maybe you spend the next few minutes to really create the criteria. As to how you're going to score the priorities and maybe you already have that. Um, but then that comes forward and you say, this is our priority street for this quarter. This is where we want to, this is what we're recommending. Then we have the discussion, then maybe Bill says, actually, I don't support that, whatever, but.
So, I mean, if they could do that and, and do some priority ranking, then that would help me tell. Preston to pull somebody off of something else to go do something or pull one of his guys off of another job. So.
I'm sorry, I don't know who Preston is.
Preston is the Public Work Superintendent and so he's in charge of the fleet policy of the city. He's in charge of maintenance pipe below grade and preparing for things for roads.
I, I hope you guys feel better today than you did. Um, I wish that we had more concrete information for you, but. I guess stay in contact with the city manager and, and let us know what, what you found. Yes, Peggy.
Just one more thing to add. I would say maybe try this for, I don't know, six months or a year. It may be that, um. Things have changed enough electronically, you know, technology, that the purpose of that commission. Is, is done. You, you know, you're not needed if, if, um, these click fix, whatever it's called. Report, you know, can go right to city staff. We don't, we don't need to make you, we don't want to find things for you to do and you don't want us to, right? And you, you have lives, so I just want to respect the purpose of why it was formed. But maybe we'll find out that it's, that purpose is no longer there.
Yeah, I think that we can take some of the load off of staff to, on some of the. Uh, overview of the issues as they come in and the prioritizing, right? We could, we could do that, so they don't have to necessarily do that. And, and work more on how they implement any, any solutions that the council comes up with.
All right, this is a new record for us, I believe. Ten twenty-four at night. Okay, so, and then within any case, uh, this meeting is adjourned.